I'm going to call this meeting of the City of Salem Urban Renewal Agency to order. Welcome to Salem City Council meeting. We also have a, we are also sitting as the Urban Renewal Agency, so we'll be doing a quick run-through of the Urban Renewal Agenda and then we'll take up the City Council meeting right away. So, if you would call the floor, please.
Board Member Kazer.
Present.
Board Member Anderson.
Likewise.
Board Member Nanki.
Here.
Board Member McCoy.
Here.
Board Member Osid.
Here.
Board Member Cook.
Here.
Board Member Lewis.
Here.
And Chair Bennett.
Here. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Commissioner McCoy. Any approv, any additions or deletions?
No, there aren't. Mr. Chair, there are no additions or deletions to the agenda.
I have no one listed for public comment to the Urban Renewal Agency. Anyone here to talk to the Urban Renewal Agency? Okay. The consent calendar.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the consent calendar with the following pull, 4.3A by Member Kazer.
Do you want to run through it?
So, the consent calendar consists of the item that was pulled and appointment to the Northway, appointment of Pablo Mayoral to the North Gateway Redevelopment Advisory Board.
That's it. All those in, is there any discussion of the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. We have an information report, our quarterly update on economic development. Are there any questions? Ms. Rutherford, did you have anything you want to highlight on this?
The one item that I would like to highlight is the PAC Trust investment in new construction out in the Mill Creek Corporate Center. This is the first speculative industrial development for leased space that has occurred in a number of years. So, we're very excited. We have an extreme shortage of this kind of industrial flex space. So, they are over the next several years, over three phases, planning on constructing close to 500,000 square feet out there, starting with two buildings here this summer that are going to total about 100,000 square feet. So, that is going to be a great addition to our industrial land inventory.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Rutherford, I actually had that circled and I'm wondering what is the PAC Trust? I mean, you told us what it does and what funds you have. Is that an acronym or what does PAC Trust mean and where did it come from and how should we feel about it?
PAC Trust is the name of the developer. So, they are a development company that largely does industrial land development and then holds that lot land. They also do some commercial development throughout the Pacific Northwest. They are, I believe, a trust from public employee retirement funds that this is how they invest those public retirement funds.
That's sort of like coming full circle then, isn't it, in this case?
In a way, yes, yeah.
Any, any further questions? Alrighty, Special Orders of Business, Counselor Kazer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry. Did we not vote yet?
No.
No, that was the information portion. We already voted on the consent calendar. And you all approved it? Want to try again?
My second is without my vote.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, we voted.
Unanimously.
Okay.
I'm old, but I remember that vote.
Yeah, I had that too, so you're okay. Okay, let's, let's, let's.
Thank you.
Kazer, have her.
I move staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Counselor?
I talked with Director this morning about, or this afternoon about this and have clarified my questions as to this specific grant agreement. It's something a bit different than the city usually does for urban renewal areas. So, I'm going to turn it over to Kristen, if she can talk about that.
Yes. So, what we are asking for here is an amendment to a grant agreement to extend the terms of that agreement by a couple of years. This is for the development of an acute rehab facility. The grant agreement in this case is not a progress payment grant agreement as we typically do during construction. Instead, in this situation, this is a rebate. So, the company will construct the rehab facility after it has been assessed and is on the tax rolls and we collect the tax increment. Then we will be rebating the increment to the company up to $749,000 or 20% of the total project costs. We anticipate that that will take four to six years of tax increment collection in order to move through the grant rebate. We're asking for the extension of the terms here because this is being developed on a former Brownfield built site and they have come into a lot of unanticipated site issues there tied to a retaining wall, tied to soil conditions and a number of things that is just taking them a bit longer to work through these issues than they originally expected.
And could you just very quickly talk about if in a year they come back to us asking for an extension, what we would base granting that or not on?
Yeah, so if, if they were not to start construction this summer as they expect and it's pushed out again further, we'd be back to the same consideration. It's not costing us, the city or the Urban Renewal Agency, any money at this time because it's not money upfront. So, we could extend it again for another year. If they are, if they've gone vertical and we're seeing that progress is underway, I think it would be very reasonable to extend it a bit longer.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I had some of the same questions that Counselor Kazer had, but I have another one. One of the issues is the retaining wall on the south end of the property and am I correct in assuming that that would be the north end of Pringle Creek?
Yes, that is on the north side.
Okay, well, then here's something that I've said a number of times and had concerns because one of the things that we've been trying to do and the Minto Island Bridge is a part of that is connecting all the parks in Eugene, Eugene, excuse me, Salem. And we could connect them to Eugene, too. That'd be a good parkway.
That's a trick.
Connecting all the parks in Salem and right now, we can go from Bush's Pasture Park through, down Church Street to a corridor that the hospital has helped us with. Then we get on the Pringle and walk through there and walk by City Hall and then we get to Commercial Street and we are stopped. And there's some issue about whether we can go on the south part of the creek, which is another urban renewal development. And I see Director Fernandez is reading his microphone, but also on the north. I mean, we ought to be, we got, there's some way, we have to get pedestrians and bikes and people through there to the parks or it's just a big roadblock. And one of the ways would be to do it on the north on the concrete sort of pad that leads to the retaining wall. So, I'm just urging again, we need to find some way to get through there and perhaps this might be one of the ways to do that when you look and talk to the people there as well as the people who are on the, the building on the south. It would seem to me that that would be good for everybody to be able to continue on the pathway once we get under Commercial to continue all the way on to the park, Riverfront Park.
Let's give Pathfinder Fernandez a chance.
Thank you, Mayor Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. Counselor, we are actively working on that issue with the property owners. So, that will.
North side, south side, both sides?
North side.
Okay. We have to have some way and if it's north side, then that's fine. I don't really care, although it seems like you could do it south side, but if you're on the south side, you're going to have to cross to the north at some point.
We're in active conversations with them and we'll see if we can make something happen in the not-too-distant future.
I am sure that you can and thank you for your efforts.
Great. Are there any further questions? Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, Kristen, things get delayed for multiple reasons. What we've seen most recently is economic reasons stall development. That's not the case here. Can you elaborate a little bit on the specific issues that are tying it up?
Yeah, so in this situation, it is the site issues. There were soil contamination and soil stability issues that required some additional excavation. There's also this retaining wall that is on the north side of the creek that needs additional support and the pathway that Counselor Anderson mentioned and that concrete slab also play into that because there's, there are some access challenges with accessing that retaining wall to be able to stabilize it. If that concrete slab is removed, then this company will have an easier time accessing that and constructing all of this, but it's those sorts of site constraints that are delaying this.
Any further questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I don't see any further business. If there's no objection, Urban Renewal Agency is adjourned. Okay, I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Salem City Council for February 27th. Carter, could you do a roll call?
Counselor Kazer.
Present.
Counselor Anderson.
Here.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor McCoy.
Here.
Counselor Osid.
Here.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Bennett.
Here. Thank you. Counselor McCoy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move that we reorder the agenda to move Special Orders of Business to right before the consent calendar.
Motion and, and second by Nanki. Go ahead.
The reason for this motion is we've got a lot of people here to discuss the issues that are involved, are at the Special Orders of Business area and they're going to have to wait here for probably 45 minutes to an hour until we get to it or we can rearrange the agenda, hear the public testimony and then deal with the business and then move on and let them go back to catch their favorite TV show, read their book or go to bed, whatever it might be.
So, where will it be again, Counselor McCoy?
Immediately before the consent agenda.
Okay.
Consent calendar.
I got it.
After public comment.
Mr. Mayor, I presume their favorite TV show is CCTV showing the City Council.
And I suspect they'd.
All the other syndolating business.
Yeah, that's right. And I suspect, Counselor Anderson, they'd still rather watch it if they're the easy chair than in this City Council meeting since half of them are standing up.
So, if there's any further discussion on this, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Okay. Counselor McCoy, additions and deletions?
I move approval additions to the agenda.
Second.
Second by Cook.
Okay, we've got two. They both deal with item 5B. One has to do with the city attorney, including an added sentence that he's reviewed the resolution and has concluded that it is consistent with state law. That's on the original motion. And we have a second motion that's got an added supplement to the motion and revised resolution number 2017-22.
Any discussion? All those in favor say, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed. Motion passes. Any comments from counselors? Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I have two comments. One is of a somewhat less serious nature than the, than the second one. I'll make the first one. I've been sitting here now for two years and many months looking at the wall across from me and looking at the wall up here and I always thought it looked pretty busy. And I've noticed in the past, maybe two months ago, that someone has redecorated things, taken things off, arranged the art much better. And so, City Manager, I wish you could convey my congratulations to whoever on your staff made this a more aesthetically pleasing place. Now to, to a serious thing. I'm grateful to see all the people that are out here to speak to the item of the inclusivity resolution, which I made the motion for. I will tell you that on Friday, after talking to some people, I also made another motion that would have expanded the classes of people who might be covered by that inclusivity motion. I'm still in favor of that, but that was really filed too late to be heard here and to be given a full hearing here. And so, what I will be doing is making a second motion at a later part of the, the meeting in order to ask the staff to come back with an amendment to the resolution, which would expand what we're doing here tonight. But the inclusivity on the immigrations and undocumented people who are living and working in our city are crucial and important and we need to get to that tonight. So, we will be doing that and I look forward to the testimony of, of all the people who are here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Any other comments? I had the opportunity on, on Friday. Did we go with the SWAT? On Friday evening to attend the annual SWAT team banquet, which by the way is a fascinating evening with a really outstanding group of our police officers. It was really both interesting, informative and I'll tell you, with the high morale of this particular unit of the Police Department is quite inspiring. This is just a really fine group of, of officers and I recommend if you have the opportunity in the future, this is an annual event, really worth doing. Plus, they have a video that explains a lot about what they do and you get to spend the evening with the chief and his lieutenants and it's, it's a, it's a evening of brass everywhere. It's a really good, good evening. Thank you, Chief. It's excellent. Anyone else? Mr. Manager? Okay, thank you. We have one proclamation this evening. Counselor Osid, would you like to do the honors?
All right. Sorry for the delay there. Can you hear me? Okay. It doesn't have a very long cord here. Okay. Whereas the people of Salem, Oregon strongly value the unique differences among our city neighborhoods and whereas Salem City Council members recognize the importance of engaging and communicating with all of its citizens and whereas the Salem City Council understands that neighbors working together are a vital influence on the quality of life in our community and whereas the North Gate Neighborhood Association was formed by the Salem City Council in 1972 as a neighborhood association and whereas for the past 45 years, this association has served as an excellent example of how an organization provides an active, open forum for neighbors to understand city issues and advocate for improvements. And whereas the mayor and city council is honored to celebrate the 45th anniversary of the North Gate Neighborhood Association, now therefore, well, I, this is Counselor Matt Osid, do hereby proclaim the year 2017 as North Gate Neighborhood Association's 45th anniversary and invite the entire community to join me in applauding the North Gate Neighborhood Association on this special occasion. Okay. So, if we could have, we have several of their members here. We have the Chair, Jason Cox, Ian Davidson, Hazel Niles, Crystal Niles Williams, Pedro Mayoral, and Elizabeth Mayoral.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We've got a substantial list. I ask you just to be respectful of the fact that there are a lot of people behind you waiting to speak. So, you have three minutes. At two minutes, an orange light goes on. You can speak at either of these two podiums. When the red light goes on, I just ask you to stop speaking so we can move on to the next person. You've had your three minutes and then I don't have to interrupt you and you don't have to try to settle up. Just stop talking and, and we'll thank you very much for coming down and we'll keep moving along. It really is quite a long list, so we'll get started now. And, oh yeah, please don't applaud or boo or stomp your feet or yell. I just, because they can't be heard. Can we want to keep people moving? I'm going to call two people at a time, take each podium or line up, either one. Jeff James and Jim Shepke.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Jeff James, Ward 4, and talking.
Speak right into the mic, Jeff. Thank you.
Talking about the police facility, surprisingly. I'm going to keep it short in the circumstances. You've got a detailed letter for me. The main point I want to make is I am in support of the 115,000 square feet. I am in support of the, the price. I'm still a critic of the price, but I have a suggestion that I've detailed in my letter on how to deal with that and that is to bring in a CMGC team of builders and architects and engineers to manage that and result in 10 to 15 million dollars of savings. And guess where that could be used? 15 million dollars on the building next to us and fix, it's more than the seismic. It's a new roof. It's new windows. It's refurbishing of the library. So, all that can be accomplished and we should talk further about how to manage that. But it's a city manager for government and I look to the city manager's team to, to carry that out successfully. Build a police facility for as low a price as we can manage and have 15 million dollars left over to apply to, to the library. Thanks for your time.
Great. Thank you very much. And Dan Wellert, you're up next. Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jim Shepke. I live in Ward 2 and I am very much in, in favor of the Inclusive Cities Resolution, but I'm here to talk about something else and that is the library seismic upgrade, which is item 5C on your agenda. And what I want to say tonight is that I understand from the staff report at the last meeting that the plan is for the library to actually stay in the building during the seismic upgrade. And I am here to tell you tonight that that is not a good idea. And I speak from firsthand experience. I was the State Librarian of Oregon, the Director of the State Library. When we did a seismic upgrade and remodel in the early 1990s and we had to stay in the building for reasons I won't go into and it was awful. It is awful to be in a building that is getting a seismic upgrade and it's bad for the staff, it's terrible for the patrons, it takes longer, it costs more. We had to actually split our building in half with a temporary wall and move everybody to one side and do one side and then move everybody back and do the other side. It's more expensive, it costs more. The only reason we could have contemplated that is that the State Library is a research library and not a public library. We get nowhere near the foot traffic that the public library gets. We don't get children, we don't get families. I cannot imagine the Salem Public Library having a seismic upgrade and staying in operation. It's just impossible. So, I urge you to not to change that plan and, and you'll need some money. You will need some kind of allowance to move the library out. So, whether you want to add that to your bond measure or you want to find the money someplace else, but it absolutely has to be done. There's no way that, that the library can stay in operation during that. So, I hope, I hope you'll reconsider your plan. Thank you.
Great. Good advice, Mr. Shepke. Thank you. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, one question. If it became the issue, would it be better to close the library during the fixing or leave it open?
Well, I think the library needs to stay in operation. You know, the library was remodeled back in, I think, 1991 and the library actually did move out to a building up on Broadway for the duration of that remodeling. It worked very well and North Salem got a library for about a year that was just terrific for them. So, that, that's really what you need to do. You need to keep it in operation. You need to move it to some kind of leased space and, and that would really be a good plan.
Great. Thank you very much. Luis Cisneros. You're, you're next behind, Mr. Ross. Yep.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett, Council. My name's Dan Wellert. I'm in Ward 4. Tonight, I'm just basically here to support our Salem Police Department. A proper home for them is long, long overdue, which I know all of you know. The current conditions the department has crammed into, it's, it's embarrassing as a citizen. It's amazing our officers have been able to provide the excellent service they continue to provide each day in our community, operating out of such a small area that they are. Please, Council, keep the library separate from the police facility. Don't combine the two. They're, they're two separate projects, two separate beasts. But I wanted to thank Mayor and Council, you know, thank you for continuing to make our community a priority and a new police facility would be a step in making us safer. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Leonardo Reyes. Mr. Cisneros, you're up.
Hi, my name is Luis Cisneros. I'm a part of the Oregon DACA Coalition that's aiming to raise awareness of DACA program and undocumented immigrants. I am a United States citizen. My parents are both immigrants from Mexico. My dad is now a naturalized U.S. citizen and my mom has her permanent residency card. And I'm here today in support of the Inclusive Cities Resolution. And I just wanted to mention a few reasons as to why this should pass. Of course, I know that this does not solve all of our issues as an immigrant community. It definitely does not, but it is a step in the right direction to provide some support. The first point that I wanted to make is that immigrants work and live in this community and they pay taxes here. And, and that's both documented and undocumented immigrants that do so. And, and some of them are not able to benefit from public services and so they are providing their taxes without necessarily getting a whole lot in return. So, the inclusivity resolution, again, is just kind of providing solace to them when they are paying into this community. Second point is that immigrant families live in constant fear of what may happen to them. And, and this is of course, you know, immigrant families, those who have, who have, those who have immigrated as adults, those who have immigrated as children, even those of us who are citizens, I'm, I'm waking up in constant fear every single day that, that my friends are going to be deported, that my family's going to be deported. And so, again, I know that this doesn't prevent deportation necessarily, but it does. One of the things is that I believe it ensures that police isn't going to work with ICE agents and that's, that's a little bit of a relief. The third point is that Salem has the opportunity to make a statement about civil rights that can be heard throughout the country, really as a representative for the state of Oregon. And I think that this is important because we can lead by example as to the civil rights issues around immigration, but Salem can also send a message that we are pro-immigrant and intolerant to discrimination and violation of human rights, which I think is something very important right now, especially as we consider things like what happened with the two Indian men, I can't remember the state, but Kansas, yes, thank you. So, just in closing, I'd like to. So just in closing, I'd like to just hopefully get through this last part. My mom, she crossed the border while she was pregnant with me, and she was deported nearly a dozen times when she first came here. So I feel like I entered into this country illegally myself because she was eight months pregnant with me. And so I was actually born here, so now I am protected despite the fact that I arrived to the U.S. nearly in the exact same conditions as others. And so my question is, why am I protected, and why are others not? Like, what is really the difference between us? And so I just ask for you to vote yes on this resolution and to continue supporting immigrants, whether documented or not, so they can be protected like I am. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, I'm sorry. And Mr. Reyes, followed by Cindy Burgess.
Hi, my name is Leonardo Reyes, and I would like to start off by asking, who is here in support of the immigrants? Can I see a show of hands? Thank you. Like I said, my name is Leonardo Reyes. I am a DACA recipient and a member of the Oregon DACA Coalition. And sure what that means is that I am an undocumented person with temporary relief from deportation, with a large emphasis on temporary. I graduated from a K-Hass school in 2008. Go Scots! Salem is and has been home for over a decade, which I consider to be a significant part of my life. Over the past few months, I had the opportunity to attend several community meetings, which were largely geared to the Hispanic population in our community. I attended these meetings because I was scared for myself, and I was scared for my family, and I wanted to know how other people were feeling. When I look at our Hispanic community, what I see is fear. I see the fear of parents sending their children off to school because one day you as a parent may not be there when your child comes back home. What happens then? I see the fear children feel for themselves because they are undocumented, and I see the fear children feel for their parents even when they themselves are U.S. citizens. I see a growing fear in our Hispanic community to interact with figures of authority because they're afraid that interaction could permanently break up their family. Making Salem an inclusive city is not an issue of who is and who isn't documented. Making Salem an inclusive city is about whether or not you will allow your community to live in fear. Recently, I've also had the opportunity to openly share my story and what it means to be undocumented, and the response has been unexpected, at least for me. On multiple occasions, I've been approached by people who then tell me, if you ever need a place to hide, know that my home is open to you. If you need a place to hide, know that my home is open to you. In that moment, I didn't really understand the courage that it takes to make a statement like that, a complete stranger inviting someone they don't know into their home, into their own personal space, into their own personal sanctuary of sorts, because they wholeheartedly believe that is the right thing to do. You see, when my community, when our community looks at me, they don't see a criminal, they don't see a drug dealer, they don't see a gang member, they don't see a person who deserves to be persecuted because of their status. What they see is a person in their community who is in need, and they seek to meet that need by offering a very intimate space in their lives. These people embody the values of our community. I don't think you have to be an immigrant to feel scared for the changes that we as a society are going through, but today you have the opportunity to take a stand. You have the opportunity to make a difference. Today, I ask you to uphold the values of your community because we are a community that believes that we are stronger together. We are a community that believes in standing up for those who are in need. Today, I need you. Today, your community needs you. Make Salem an inclusive city. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Burgess, followed by Jennifer Salazar. Jennifer Salazar, okay.
Honorable Mayor Bennett and City Councilors, my name is Cindy Burgess. I'm the President of the League of Women Voters of Marion and Polk Counties. On February 8th, I submitted a letter to the mayor and a copy of our positions on immigration, acceptance of diversity, and farmworkers. As you may know, the League of Women Voters studies issues before we come to policy positions, and in 2008, we did study the immigration system in the United States. The League of Women Voters of the United States believes that immigration policies should promote unification of immediate families, meet the economic, business, and employment needs of the United States, and be responsive to those facing political persecution or humanitarian crises. The League supports federal immigration law that provides an efficient, expeditious system with minimal or no backlogs for legal entry of immigrants into the United States so that immigrants need not wait years to come here or come the dangerous path of the undocumented. In achieving overall policy goals, the League supports a system for undocumented immigrants to earn legal status. While policy reforms, including a path to legal status, remain unachieved, the League does not support deporting undocumented immigrants who have no history of criminal activity. The League supports due process for all persons, including the right to a fair hearing, right to counsel, right of appeal, and right to humane treatment. Regarding immigrants under city, county, or state arrest or custody, the City of Salem should follow Oregon Revised Statute 181, Point A820, and the decision in Miranda Oliveres versus Clackamas County, which said holding an immigrant without a federal court warrant or order is a violation of the Fourth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. The League of Women Voters of Marion and Polk Counties supports efforts to raise awareness of the wide range of cultural and racial diversity in our community and celebrate the contributions of immigrants, not only to our economy but of our society as a whole. This is the home of the World Beat Festival. This is the home of the World Beat Gallery. This is the city of Shalom. The City of Salem must continue to foster an atmosphere of safety and inclusivity. We are here to support CAUSA and PCCUN and other organizations who have proposed the inclusivity resolution, and therefore, we hope that you will vote yes.
Great. Thank you very much. And your letter is in our packet as well, so, good. Phil Decker, you'll follow Ms. Salazar. There you are.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett and City Councilpersons. My name is Jennifer Salazar. I have been a resident of Salem for 26 years, and I have also raised my daughter.
I need to have you speak closer into that mic.
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay.
I've raised my daughter in this city, and I have worked in this city, and I continue to work in this city. So I am here today in support of the Inclusive City Resolution. My daughter's father is an immigrant to this country, and I've had the pleasure to work with and serve many immigrant families for over 20 years. I believe we all belong in this community. We all bring value to this city, and I do not want anyone in my community, our community, to live in fear that they will be unreasonably detained, that they will be victims of prejudice or discrimination for their religion, for their national origin, for their gender identity, for their sexual orientation. So I, again, encourage you to support this Inclusive City Resolution because we all need to have our human and civil rights respected, and we all should be able to exist in the community and be unafraid. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, followed by Reverend Arturo Fernandez.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett and City Councilmembers. My name is Phil Decker. I reside at 4289 44th Court in northeast Salem. Thank you for holding this hearing to discuss the inclusivity resolution, and thanks for the video you created right after the election when you sensed fear within many of our vulnerable communities in Salem. As a longtime educator in our school district, in neighborhoods with large Latino populations, I'm here to share with you that those fears have not subsided. On the contrary, they have only grown. They have seen in our community how Guadalupe Garcia de Rayos in Phoenix was deported by ICE on February 10th and separated from her teenage children, both U.S. citizens. They have seen how Daniel Ramirez, a protected immigrant under the DACA Act, was apprehended by ICE in Seattle, a sanctuary city, on February 15th for supposedly being a risk to public safety. Families in Salem also believe that this could happen to them, their family members, their coworkers, their friends. I provide this context to implore you to be specific when adopting an inclusivity resolution. Please be clear about safeguards it does provide and those that it doesn't. Adopting a resolution is only a beginning. What will our city's response be when increased deportations come to our town, when families are broken apart, when kids come to my school crying, unable to learn, to focus, due to the loss of a parent, a sibling, an aunt, an uncle, a cousin, a grandparent? How will we stand up for them? How will we care for and comfort those who are left behind? Ever since the election, we have kids who are trying to learn to be good boys and girls all day at school with the gnawing fear that they may not see their parents again by the end of the school day. Last week, a fourth grader was taking a NAEP test, that's a standardized national test, at our school. The test included a survey, which asked him for some demographic information about his ethnicity, who he lives with, and his zip code. This fourth grader was adamant that he wasn't going to answer for fear of the information being used to locate and deport his family. Jose is nine years old. So I applaud your efforts as leaders of our community to help preserve our nation's core values, to welcome and defend all of our neighbors, our families, and our children. We have an opportunity to make Salem shine as a community of compassion and kindness, not a place resigned to indifference, hate, and fear.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Reverend Fernandez and Sandra Hernandez.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is Arturo Fernandez. I'm a retired United Methodist pastor. My wife Irene and I live in Salem Town. I have served more than 60 years in ministries that, here and in other countries, but primarily in this country, that have involved working with the poor at all levels, and people of color, white people, and people of many colors and many languages. And what I have found is that people are pretty similar wherever we go. I've been to over 26 countries, and again and again, I find the same types of sufferings. And when I come back to this country, of course, I'm always anxious to come back when I go off on mission trips. I come back to a country that welcomes the stranger, a country that welcomes all, at least in its history, but we're facing incredible problems today, as you know. And I wrote some things, and I thought, as I hear all the other persons that have spoken, they are right on target. And I don't want to repeat all that, so I just want to read a little bit of this. And many U.S. citizens whose lives have been shaped outside the circle of economic, social, and racial injustice fail to see or experience the living pain, the suffering, that takes place in the lives of people in those largely unknown places in each city across America. Most of us rely on the law and order apparatus to protect us from all that might threaten our existence, our lives, violence, and civil disorder. Currently, in our country, we are aware of how contrary to our highest regard for family and community values, the federal government, under the direction of our new president, is exercising its understanding of its constitutional responsibility. These are actions in lieu of having in place a workable immigration policy that we keep calling for, screaming for. Our president desires to not only add 10,000 ICE work officers, but he wants to authorize state and local personnel.
Thank you, Reverend Fernandez, very much. Let's see, Ms. Hernandez, and then Jaime Arrendondo.
Good afternoon. My name is Sandra Hernandez, and I am from northeast Salem. I am also a first-generation immigrant, and I am here to speak on behalf of the youth that I work with and of my community. I am the coordinator of Latinos Unidos Siempre, which is one of the oldest Latino youth-led organizations in Marion County. Many of the youth that we have in the organization are immigrants and are also undocumented. So this is a reality that we face every day, something that our youth are in constant fear of what might happen next. So I'm here to ask our City Council and our mayor to support Governor Kate Brown's decision to make Oregon a state that protects immigrants and refugees. Please do not use law enforcement or local governments to provide services for ICE and to enforce deportations based on profiling. As we may already know, profiling doesn't just, you know, it's not something made up. The way people are being deported right now is through profiling. The way they look, their skin color, their hair, whether they're driving in a van full of workers, whether they have a type of license plates. People are being profiled, and we can't deny that. So we want to make sure that our city protects our immigrants and that it does not allow our police to mutually profile our community. And remember, I've heard a lot of statements that, you know, we support immigrants who don't have a criminal background, but criminalization is also occurring in our communities. Someone who's hardworking, who's a parent, who simply needs to take their kids to school can become a criminal in our current policies because Missouri ADA did not pass in 2014. What this means is that a lot of parents are having to drive without a license, so they are being stopped, and they're being incriminated, and so they have a criminal background after that. So remember, when we talk about criminals, let's ensure that we are also implementing laws that do not incriminate innocent, hardworking people. So I would ask, I want to ask our City Council again, and our mayor, to please ensure that our families are safe and that the youth that I work with can walk down the streets without having to fear being stopped by the police or being profiled, as they were when we first started the organization in the 1990s, when youth were being profiled by the police portraying as gang members. Now they're being portrayed as illegal citizens, and again, illegal, there's no such thing as an illegal human being. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Levi Herrera?
Good evening. My name is Jaime Arrendondo. I've been a Salem resident for 27 years, currently live in West Salem. I'm also an employee of PCCUN Oregon's Farmworker Union. I'm here to ask you to pass the inclusivity resolution that's being presented to you. And I know we did this already once, but let's, I want to show a hand again for those who are here to pass the inclusivity resolution. Raise your hand. In the 27 years I've been here, our community has dramatically evolved. We have 79 different primary languages spoken in our school district. Our Latino population has gone from 6,000 in 1991 I got here to 36,000. One in every four people in Salem are Latino. We are students, homeowners, educators, business owners, healthcare and social care providers, nonprofit leaders, artists, and voters. But in this moment, our community's existence and contributions are under threat. Fear has creeped in, but it will not prevail. It never does because we're a community of hope, and you can help with that by providing some relief and signaling to all city employees and all the community of Salem that we're going to stand with our immigrant brothers and sisters. We're going to preserve local resources for local priorities. We're going to preserve local resources for local priorities rather than volunteering assistance in immigration enforcement. We're going to demonstrate to the city's commitment to the values of inclusion, equality, and respect for all residents that call Salem their home. This is who we are.
Great. Thank you very much. Levy, and then Andrea Miller. Andrea, you're next.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett, councilors, and everybody here. My name is Levy Herrera Lopez. I reside in southeast Salem, and I'm also executive director of Mano Mano Family Center. I'm here in support of the inclusivity resolution. And you've heard very good reasons why this makes sense for Salem. I heard a lot in the media and coming from Washington that there are ways to humanely round up people and to do all these things. There is no way to do this humanely. And there's also something that gets missed. Logistically, there's no way to remove that many people without opening detention centers, and that should scare everybody. We're seeing little things happening throughout the nation with people being stopped on domestic flights by Customs and Border Protection. I don't want to see that happening in Oregon. I don't want to see our police force, or the National Guard, or our reserves being used to round up people. And then, we did it to the Japanese. It was done to Latinos in California before, where citizens were also rounded up. It is never done humanely. And passing this resolution will show where Salem stands. And as you can see by the diversity of people who have spoken, we're already so interrelated, as Jaime just mentioned, you can, this cannot be done without tearing our families apart. Not just my family, but your neighbors, and it doesn't make sense on a human level, and it certainly doesn't make sense on a fiscal level. So whatever angle you support, this makes sense for Salem. And as one of my high school teachers used to say, do the right thing just because it's the right thing to do. There's no other reason for it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Levy. Andrea Miller, followed by, let me just look here real quickly, Pamela Murray.
Mayor Bennett, members of the Salem City Council, thanks so much for the opportunity to testify in support of the inclusivity resolution here before us today. My name is Andrea Williams. I'm the executive director of CAUSA. It's a Latino immigrant rights organization based right here in Salem. And I first want to say huge thanks to the immigrants and the undocumented immigrants who are testifying here today, who are here listening in person at this hearing. That takes courage. Thank you to our allies who are here with us today. Thank you to our African-American folks that are here representing today. It takes courage to stand up for these issues, and we're going to continue to need you throughout the coming years. So thank you, first and foremost, to you all who are here, and thank you to the city council for considering this issue. As you heard earlier, it is a very uncertain time for so many immigrant families who have been an integral part of Salem's cultural and economic fabric. Many have been afraid indeed of taking their children to school, going to work, visiting local government buildings like the courthouse right here in this own building, and even opening their door for fear that they may run into Immigration Customs Enforcement. And there's real reasons for that, that the teacher previously indicated, right? The dreamer in Seattle who was detained, even right here in north of us, in Woodburn, a father of three U.S.-born children who's been here for 27 years, no criminal history, is now caught up in deportation proceedings. His hearing date is March 10th in Tacoma. These are real things. And while there's very little that the city can actually do to prevent ICE from separating families, it is important for Salem's well-being and the functioning of the city that families won't be under threat of deportation and separation for simply taking public transit, for using the chariots, right? For going to the Salem Police Department for help? For going to the public library, right? It's vital that families hear loud and clear from their city that Salem has this policy. So I want to thank you again for considering this, for supporting it, and I hope that you will vote yes today. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Charles Fong and Peter, Charles Fong and Peter, unless it's difficult to read, Bale, Barle, I'm not sure. So, good. Thank you. On Rose Street. Mr. Fong.
Okay. Well, thank you to Mayor Bennett and the city council. My name is Charles Fong. I'm in Ward 7. Sally Cook is my councilperson. And I would like to begin by quoting the Seattle Times. The article's dated January 30th, 2017. It reads as follows, "Seattle City Council reaffirms support for immigrants and refugees." Furthermore, it says, "Seattle is a welcoming city that serves its residents regardless of their immigration or refugee status. This was a unanimous yes vote for refugees and for inclusivity." So, the question is, what does Seattle have to do with Salem, Oregon? Well, first of all, consider this. Out of 350 metro communities in the United States, Seattle ranks number 10 in family wage jobs. In other words, one of the 10 highest communities in terms of providing family wage jobs is in Seattle. And what else is in Seattle? Well, most of us know that Microsoft is in Seattle, Boeing is in Seattle, Amazon is in Seattle, Costco's in Seattle. And guess what they all have in common? A corporate program that promotes inclusivity. Now, I come originally from the San Jose, San Francisco area, and they are, actually, both communities score higher than Seattle in terms of per capita GDP and family wage jobs on a weekly basis. So in other words, San Francisco and San Jose have a greater level of economic prosperity than Seattle. And guess what? They are inclusive cities. Guess what they support? Inclusive corporations and big business. So I would like to conclude by asking the city council to accept the proclamation of inclusivity, because inclusivity is pro-business, pro-economic growth, pro-family wage jobs, pro-education, and pro-environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Jeff, Jeff Heyen, H-E-Y-E-N, it looks like, or Heyer? Sorry. Go ahead, Peter.
Good evening, ma'am. My name is Peter Bale, and I live in the northeast. I'd like to start on a very positive note and to thank the city. I was one of the organizers for the Women's March on January 21st. And I'd like to congratulate the city for their cooperation. Becky George and two members of staff, Cliff Bash and Leo Gonzalez, did a fantastic job in helping us, as did Lieutenant Upkis and Corporal Chewy from the Police Department. They did a wonderful job in helping us have a safe and productive day where 4,200 people showed their passion for everything to do with social justice. So thank you for that. The week before, I went to a CAUSA presentation at the city's, at the state Capitol steps, and last week to an immigrant rally. Now, I am an immigrant, but I cannot possibly speak for the immigrants who are threatened at the moment, because I have so much privilege, it's ridiculous. So, what I can tell you is that Salem itself is a very diverse community, and inclusivity is a good thing. Sanctuary is a much better thing. There is a category of city, which is a sanctuary city, which actually is a step up from inclusivity. And I would really like the city council to have a look at what being a sanctuary city is as opposed to just being inclusive. Of course I support inclusivity. I have heard so many stories in the last few weeks from immigrants about how they are fearful of what might happen every single day. And I believe that Salem as a city should stand up for our neighbors, should stand up for all our residents, and stand up against the thugs and the bullies that are currently running our country. It's an absolute disgrace what they are doing, and our sort of proclamation of starting with inclusivity but then moving to sanctuary, I hope at some stage, is what is necessary for us to show that we will not put up for it, that we will look after each other, because basically, we are all immigrants. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Pete Teller, Pete Teller, you're up next after Jeff.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. My name is Jeff Heyen. I live in northeast Salem. I was a former neighborhood chair. I've been involved in neighborhood association things and political things for 20 years in this city. And I have to tell you, I hear a lot of impassioned testimony tonight, and I agree with a lot of what you're saying. I agree that people should not be profiled. I agree that, you know, all of these human rights are important. But I also believe in the rule of law. And we live in a country with a constitution, and whether we like it or we don't like it, that constitution gives our federal government the authority to control immigration policy. And with respect to your resolution tonight, I might just let you all know that everything that you've pointed out in this resolution is covered under federal law, state law, or statute of the city of Salem. Your police officers are not out there rounding up and helping ICE just because they see an immigrant and they want to go get him. They don't do that. That's not in there what they do. So, I support immigrants. My son is immigrated. He is adopted from Cambodia. I went through the same immigration and naturalization services many of you have, and I agree with you, it's a piece of work, okay? I also have a son-in-law who immigrated, him and his family, here from Mexico. So I totally understand the cost and everything else that's involved in it, and I see there's needs for improvement. But I want to say one thing, he did it legally, and so did I. That's important. I don't mind the idea of inclusivity, but I want to include people who follow the law. I don't believe that people are targeted and excluded from this country just because of the color of their skin. It might be in some cases, and if that's being done, it should not be. But if you've broken our laws, you need to be held accountable. That's what they're there for. And if you don't like the laws, there is a way to change them. I might ask you to get involved in your local politic, in your parties, in your whatever. There's lots of ways to change these laws. But for people like me who have followed the law to the letter, and my family who've come to this country legally, for folks to advocate otherwise is a slap in my face. I'm sorry, it just is. So I do not support this resolution. I don't think this is the business of a city council. It is the business of the rule of law and people going and getting involved in their government and making changes to the laws if you don't like them. This is a political grandstanding thing, is all I see it. All it is, is about pointing out to people that oppose it, that you're bad, you're evil. I'm not. I'm just as much in favor of immigration as any of you are. I just want it done legally. So I appreciate your opportunity for me to be sort of a minority, but thank you.
Thank you. Follow, let's see, Sandra Hernandez, I think you've spoken, unless there's two of you here. If I got a second one, okay. Herb Shaw, you'll be next. After this guy.
Good evening, Mayor and city councilors. My name is Pete Teller. I reside in Ward 6. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors of the Salem Kaiser Education Association. And I'm speaking in support of the inclusive city resolution. In the spirit of unity, the Salem Kaiser Education Association unanimously passed a statement of our own affirming that we are a welcoming and inclusive union. The statement reads, "The Salem Kaiser Education Association boldly states and reaffirms that we are a welcoming and inclusive union who unequivocally and without reservation will do everything within the scope of our ability to protect our students, their families, our members, and our extended community from any efforts of both individuals and entities meant to harm and prevent engagement and participation in a safe and caring educational environment. This official statement recognizes that our duty, recognizes our duty to affirm and protect the rights of students of all backgrounds and cultures, urge policy and/or legislation protecting immigrant children and their families, vigorously support and defend the inalienable rights of LGBTQIA+ children, youth, and adults from incursions of conversion therapy, discrimination, and restroom restrictions that would attempt to curb the right to existence of these individuals, oppose a registry in any form that would detail and add to any database the personal information of individuals based on religious membership or affiliation, and/or that would target or ban any of our friends, families, and associates from exercising their freedom of religion, and work to resist the overcriminalization of students of color within our criminal justice system by interrupting the school-to-prison pipeline. Additionally, the Board of Directors of Salem Kaiser Education Association supports its members' constitutionally protected freedoms who choose to peacefully and nonviolently stand in solidarity with those community partners who reflect our values and work to promote social justice and equity for our most vulnerable constituents. I urge the city of Salem to add your voice in solidarity."
Great. Thank you very much. Herb Shaw. John, you're up, and then Herb Shaw.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, John Hawkins, 5539 Bellflower Court, southeast, Ward 4 in Salem. Just wanted to, I regret that I have to interrupt the discussion about inclusivity to put in another pitch for the Salem Police Facility Bond Measure. I'm going to give you, congratulations for giving the green light to this resolution. Hope that you'll pass it tonight and go on to join together with everybody in the community to pass this bond measure and build this new police building. Thank you.
Go ahead.
My name is Herb Shaw. I reside in Ward 8. I have a business in Ward 1. I'm a native Argonian. I have an adopted stepson that is half Mexican. I have a daughter-in-law that is native Mexican legally in the United States. And I support immigration. I do not support illegal, regardless of their nationality. Share a story with you. If I were to choose to rob a bank, and I got away with that for a number of years, and I invested in property, when I would be found, I would lose all of my inheritance that I have accumulated here, and rightly so. We salute our flag. You saluted the flag just today. I joined you in that effort. You swore to uphold our constitution, both city-state and federal, and yet you're going against our state and federal constitution with this concept that you have proposed here. Being a native Argonian, I am appalled and disappointed and ashamed of our political climate in this state. We are, through this proposal, we are promoting lawlessness. We should be, if the people that come in here that are undocumented, they knew what they were doing, they came here, they had children here, they knew they were illegal when that happened. They want to be, they want to be a citizen of my country, then they can do it the legal way. They can take their family back and they can get in line with everybody else, like my daughter-in-law. And they can work their way through the process. The process may not be the best, but it's the best in the world. I thank you for your time, and I ask that you do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Peter Bergel, followed by Tammy Hess. Peter Bergel, followed by Tammy Hess.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. I'd like to thank you, as others have done, for the opportunity to be here today and for this resolution, especially Counselor Anderson, I'm in his ward, and I appreciate you bringing this forward to us. I want to focus on what immigrants bring to our community, because I think that's a really important part of this whole thing. Not that I don't agree that we should do the right thing and help people not feel threatened in our community and all that other stuff that people have been mentioning, which I totally support. But I'm a son of immigrants who came here as Jews fleeing from Hitler in the Second World War. And if they hadn't been able to come to this country, if they hadn't been able to leave Germany, they wouldn't have survived, and I wouldn't be here today. So, I have a very strong feeling that immigration is important. What they brought to this country, they were both college professors, and what they brought to this country was a lifetime of students who, one after another, considered them to be some of the best professors that they'd ever had in their lives. So, they contributed enormously to the education of our communities, the communities that they lived in. And I think that's really important. I think we should focus on the fact that immigrants bring a number of skills, they bring a number of abilities, they bring a diversity of experience, and that enriches our community in a lot of ways, economically, culturally, and otherwise. So, we should focus on this being an asset. We should figure that we're actually blessed by people who come to our country from other countries. So, I really want to commend the Council. I think you're going to pass this. I hope you do. And I know it doesn't do as much as I'd like to see us do, because the federal laws are what they are. But I go around wearing this safe space thing right here to let people know that if they're endangered, I'm going to be there to support them. And I think that's exactly what this resolution does. It says, "We're going to do the best as a city to support the people who are endangered." I think that's a great thing, and I'm proud to be a member of the Salem community because of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bergel. Benny Williams and Pamela Murray. Pamela? All right, let me know you're here. No? Okay. Margarita? Oh, is she? Where is she? Nope. Margarita?
I'll have one.
No. Jeez. God. Boy, we're just not doing real well here, are we? Michelle Alman Tofki. Ah, excellent. There we go. Benny, would you like to, Reverend?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Benny Williams. I'm the president of the Salem Kaiser Branch of the NAACP. I'm also a resident of southeast Salem. You know, I'm here tonight to say that the NAACP, as the oldest civil rights organization, is front and center on this issue that we're speaking of tonight, but not just here in Salem, but around the country. I'd like for us to just take a second and look around and see the faces that's in the room here. You see the faces of the complete diversity of this city. Now, take a look at the members of the city council. You know, I'm not joking when I say this, but there's a stark difference. You know, there's an old political adage that one of the great speakers of the House of Representatives, Tip O'Neill, once said was, "All politics are local." And that is as true today as it ever should be, because we're standing right here in the city hall of the city of Salem, and this is where we have to not simply show our faces, but continue to be vigilant in understanding what they're doing and what we are asking them to do. The diversity that's in this room is not here by accident. Many of us go back more than 15, 20 years, and I can assure you, 15 to 20 years ago, you would not have seen this diversity. So, we've made progress, but we've got to continue to make progress. We've got to continue to understand, whether you like it or not, we're here. And there are means and steps for us to go through this process of having our immigrant citizens be a recognized legitimate part of our community. Yes, some of them are here illegally, but you know, to have the comment made earlier about them going back and getting in line makes no sense. Makes no sense. They're here, they've been paying taxes, they've been productive. Let's make them legal so that we can move forward. I'm here to say, and I would like for us to understand and agree, that this reflection of this body, the residents that's in the audience and the city council, have the ability of moving forward. And we have the ability of doing so without a lot of rancor, without a lot of fussing and fighting, but we have to do it in unity. And I would like to encourage all of us to understand that it's possible, and we can do this. We can do it as NAACP, we can do it as CASA, we can do it as Mono Amado, we can do it as the neighborhood associations that got recognized earlier this evening. But we have to do it together. And that's what I believe we're here to promote, is that we're all on the same page. And that page is one in which has some differing points of view, but we can get through this. And I hope that we do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Jose Gonzalez.
Salaam alaikum. My name is Michelle Alman Tofki, and I'm one of board members of Salem Islamic Center. On behalf of my community, community members, as an Argonians, whether by birth or by choice, we believe as society that we must uphold our values of dignity and respect in this city of peace. We urge our city officials to reacknowledge and reaffirm these values, for it's crucial that every contributing soul should live a life of dignity, equality, and respect. Those values should be assured not only for a particular group, a certain color, or specific religion, but for all individuals that call Salem home. Few months ago, a couple of teenagers in a local high school here in Salem approached one of our kids, brown-skinned and Arab-American, and based on his appearance alone, they told him that, "You should go home, you should go back where you came from." He said, "I was born in California, here in the United States. Where should I go?" They said, "Go back to Mexico." And he wasn't even Mexican. As if you weren't born with a certain color, certain look, or certain last name, you may not belong in this city anymore. Sadly, that train of thought is also shared by several grown-ups now supported by new federal and political policies. We don't want that here. We don't want that here at home. The worst feeling in a living life is to be in a constant threat of deportation and separation from your own family by simply calling police for protection or contacting a city official for assistance. If a harmless individual or a family member doesn't feel safe living in a city of peace, how sound would be our humanity? As the executive order of Governor K. Brown says, and I'm quoting, "Oregon is and must remain a welcoming, inclusive, and compassionate place for all contributing members of our community, including immigrants and refugees." And it further states, "That discrimination threatens the rights and privileges of its inhabitants and menaces the institutions and foundations of a free democratic state. Therefore, we must urgently unite together to pass inclusivity laws, to protect the human and civil rights of everyone in this beautiful city of peace." I thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, for listening to our testimonies, for reaffirming your commitment of providing safe communities to all, and to all. May peace be upon you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Lewis, we have a question.
All right, Counselor Lewis. Thank you for your testimony. You have mentioned a specific issue in a specific place here in Salem, in the high school.
Correct.
And you have described it clearly enough to show that it was a clear violation of the rights of that student. Can you tell me what that student did about it?
Absolutely. The student came to our Islamic Center with his parent, and he stated that statement, that incident. And it happened a couple of months ago, just after Obama took place, I'm sorry, after Trump took place. And we didn't want to really raise a big issue. There were a couple of teenagers saying, you know, a couple of things. But what really concerned us, that this is teachable, you know, behavior. They wouldn't know that if their parents had not even mentioned it, or they heard it, or they, a kid would not really come up with that on their own. And that was a big concern, a big issue, but we didn't want to make a fuss out of it. Again, we're teenagers just talking about it.
And I truly appreciate that, but unfortunately, to effect change, you have to stand up.
Correct. I agree with you 100%. And therefore, I'm here to speak about it.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, City Council members, thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Jose Gonzalez, resident of Ward Five, president of Ducasa Real Estate. We've been in Salem over 23 years. I'm founding board member of the Latino Business Alliance and former city budget committee member. And I'm also here to testify in favor of the resolution, but I want to share a quick story that sort of gives you the basis, one of the reasons why. It was the summer of 1982. My brother and I were members, attended the migrant head start summer school program. That year, it was in Jervis. And our favorite part of the day was coming up, it was recess. And it was a great day, and you know, you could see the strawberry fields and the farm workers out there working. And then we heard a commotion. And you know, we were elementary age kids, so you know, we turned our attention to the fields, and we see people running. And to the left, you see all the agents, the trucks, the vans pulling up, start chasing them. Some of them ran our way. Some of them ran in the schools. They jumped into the garbage containers, wherever they could hide. Then the agents started coming towards us. And then there we are, little kids yelling and screaming and cussing at them. Things were coming out of my mouth, I didn't even know. Well, the worst part about it, though, is we knew what was happening. There was no shock. We were mad. And at that time, the teachers pulled us in, and I don't remember the rest. But because of that, you know, you lack the feeling of safety. You're not even safe at home because your parents are afraid. Those are the people that usually show you support. So, who do you turn to? Luckily, I had a big family. We had courage, we weren't afraid. We're still not afraid. But a lot of my friends didn't. They didn't have the same support. A lot of them turned to gangs. I mean, I was heavily recruited throughout my middle, elementary school years, because I was Latino. Luckily, I said, you know, luckily I have my family, so I didn't need that. But I know that led directly to the gang epidemic in Woodburn that we suffered through the 80s and 90s. And we're all still paying for that. You know, so this resolution is really more, I would say, giving our community, Latino community, immigrant community, refugee community, that same feeling that my family gave me, that we're here for you in spirit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Rabbi Herb.
Hi. Good evening. Someone signed me up. Ann Olivia Palazzo Angulo is my name. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I reside in Ward Five at 364431st Avenue Northeast, and Salem's been my home since 1963. My mother's side of the family has pioneer roots stretching back to the 1880s. I was always told that my great-great-grandmother was scalped by the Indians on her way to Oregon. Big story, right? And lived through it. I've got all that pioneer culture in my entire background. And I love Salem, and I'm really proud to call Salem my home. I'm the executive director of the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality, the nonprofit I co-founded with my husband and other dedicated people whose values are equity and justice. We work with about 1,000 immigrant parents in Spanish each year, involving them in the school system and helping their children to succeed in school. We also assist the school district in bringing parents into the education process, in school leadership, and providing opportunities to practice culturally responsive relationships with parents and families. We work also with parents, specifically with small children, to demonstrate how to play and learn with them at home, and learn to read and develop academic skills. I wanted to tell you about the fear that we're hearing. Of course, I'm in this every single day. All of our staff come back to the office with stories every day. You've heard a lot of stories, so I'm not going to say them again. We all want the same thing, all of you, whether or not you support immigration, illegal immigration, or whether you don't. I know you all want children to be safe, to be not traumatized, to be able to grow up and have living wage, raise the next generation well. We certainly want to reduce crime, and we want to have a healthy, caring community in Salem. And of course, it's being severely threatened right now. What I wanted to mention is that one of the reasons that it's a crazy story to me, what Jose just told, because to actually go after farmworkers in the field picking strawberries, we are the ones, the agricultural interests in Oregon, which is our main, I mean, one of our absolute main, you know, production. We are the agriculture center of the world in a way, and Willamette Valley is famous, and we're very proud of that. They needed workers, and they took buses down to get those workers and bring them up. So, I don't quite see how they were here illegally if someone else went and got them, and the government said it was okay, but then the other part of the government doesn't think it's okay. So, you have these two competing forces, and that's why the city is taking a stand that we are not participating in the other side of what the government also says. And I don't believe it's a constitutional issue, I believe it's a moral issue. So, I just wanted to say that.
Great. Thanks, Ann Olivia. Deborah, time's up. I really.
My time's up already?
That red light means stop.
Okay. Well, I'm very proud of this, so I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Deborah Bello. Deborah Bello.
Is it Deborah Patterson?
Will? Ferris Bueller, I begin to. Zoe Deku. Zoe, good, thank you. And Keith Quick. Sir Keith Quick?
He had a lead with the baby, but I'm going to leave it for him.
You're after Zoe.
Great.
Excellent.
My name is Zoe Diaku, and I'm a resident of Ward Two. And my classroom, as well as my community, should be considered sanctuaries for those who are afraid for the emotional and the physical health. As a proud American of Greek extraction, I would hope that we wouldn't need to declare ourselves a sanctuary, as this is part of our very history. However, that's not the case. To be an effective teacher, you learn not to assume, and instead, spell it out. Salem, Salaam, Shalom, should be a city of peace, refuge, and sanctuary. And within this city of peace, we should find a place where my students don't feel they have to hide their religion, or their sexual orientation, or their gender identity, where my students don't have to miss school because they have to take care of their families. Salem should be a Salem should be a place where we can learn and practice what it means to be a good citizen of our community without fear of discrimination, criminalization, or violence of any kind. Contrary to what some may think, the term sanctuary is used in this context does not mean that a city or institution will conceal or shelter undocumented immigrants from detection. Rather, this type of sanctuary policy should commit us to serving all individuals without regard to immigration status, should protect the privacy of community members by keeping their immigration status confidential, and direct law enforcement officers, as is already the state law, which has been pointed out, not to investigate, arrest, or hold people solely on the basis of immigration status, religion, henceforth. Declaring Salem an inclusive city of sanctuary is vital to preserving those police and community relations, decreasing racial profiling and civil liberties violations, ensuring that residents feel safe reporting crimes and accessing basic government services. Not doing so will jeopardize my students' safety and interfere with our school's educational missions. One of my students recently shared a rap, which I'll not do justice in only a portion, but he told me, "I've got 99 problems, let me tell you about this one. It's taken over my mind, it's corrupting my soul, making me feel like I'll never make it out of this hole." My students have shared, whether they're citizens, or undocumented, or Muslim, or LGBTQ and others, they have shared with me too many stories of prejudice which have led to fear for their mental, spiritual, and physical safety. Since I'm running out of time, I think we know that prejudice is born out of ignorance and fear, and dealing with this will take courage and determination. And I hope that we have learned something from our history, so I can share that with my students.
Great. Thank you very much. Lori Doherty. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. I just wanted to thank you, Zoe, for coming and testifying today. It certainly took a lot of courage, but you got me wondering, since you're another teacher to testify. Would anyone who's a teacher who came tonight in support of the inclusive resolution, please signify that by raising your hand?
Thank you, my fellow.
Okay. Lori, Lori, are you gonna, there we go. Okay, Keith.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Rolando Figueroa. I live in South Salem. I'm speaking on behalf of Keith Quick. Folks who earlier heard the baby laughing, if you're a parent, you know, laughs easily turn to cries, and that happens tonight. So good evening, Mayor Bennett and City Councilors. My name is Keith Quick.
And my name is Tomoko Quick. And this is our son, Koski. We are residents of Ward 2. Our family is here both as representatives of Salem's strong immigrant community and as representatives of the Salem Solidarity Network, a coalition of organizations and individuals drawn together to resist bigotry and hatred towards marginalized groups utilizing an intersectional approach. Tonight, we are here to support the resolution proposed by City Councilor Tom Anderson. We applaud the efforts by our elected representatives to uphold the democratic values of equity, justice, and inclusivity, which this resolution articulates. Our country's political leadership has proven that our nation's long history of hostility and violence toward marginalized groups, particularly immigrants of color, is not over. We find this resolution to be an appropriate and absolutely necessary action to further the city's goal of eliminating discrimination. As stated in Chapter 97 of our city code, the city recognizes that discrimination poses a threat to the health and safety and general welfare of the citizens of Salem, and menaces the institutions and foundation of our community. We wholeheartedly agree. This resolution clarifies the value laid out in Chapter 97, and we dedicate Salem as an inclusive city for all members of our community. Finally, we are here to show support for the organizations and individuals that have long addressed racism, xenophobia, and all forms of bigotry here in Oregon, to make this resolution possible. CAUSA, mano a mano, Latinos Unidos siempre, Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equity, the NAACP, Racial Justice Organizing Committee, and others have long protected and advocated for the most marginalized communities in Salem and across the state. They are invaluable resources and are, without a doubt, the leaders of our community so desperately needs. Given the absence of racial diversity on the city council and the general lack of diversity throughout our city's government, we expect you to continue working with these leaders and to fiercely uphold inclusivity as central to making Salem a safe community for all. We look forward to seeing this resolution pass and to the continued efforts the city will make to ensure that it protects our fellow community members. Thank you.
Thank you. Marco, Marco Benavides. Is Marco, just a second, Lori. There you are. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Mayor Bennett and councilors, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Lori Doherty. I live in Ward 2, and I'm a member of the coordinating committee of ARJOC, the Racial Justice Organizing Committee here in Salem. I want to thank my ward counselor, Tom Anderson, for introducing the resolution on inclusivity, and I urge all of you to adopt it. The Trump administration has a long list of people that it vilifies, threatens, intimidates, and mocks, immigrants and refugees that the president wants to exclude and deport, people whose identity and own sense of humanity he wants to suppress. Donald Trump sees them as categories. We know them as friends, neighbors, and family, as colleagues and coworkers, as individuals we meet and greet on a daily basis. As others have said, the word Salem itself is derived from the word for peace, and Salem takes pride in being a city of peace. Beyond these doors is our own civic space known as Peace Plaza. We cannot have peace if people are afraid. It's up to all of us to ensure that Salem is an inclusive city, a place of peace and welcome and safety and protection for everyone that lives and works and visits here, not just on paper, but in reality. Thank you.
Thank you. And Gregory, Greg. Gregory, Greg. Or Deborah Patterson. Mr. Benavides.
Yes, my name is Marco Benavides, and before you start, my time, I wanted to recognize, acknowledge the chief of police in the back, and we appreciate it. So meet your chief of police in the back, please. Also, I wanted to acknowledge Peter Fernandez, who has been working for many, many years back. Also, I see Bill Burger over there, and a very critical individual here in this community. Just wanted to acknowledge, I don't know if you know about the Peace Plaza, somebody mentioned, just recently mentioned the Peace Plaza. We painted way back in 1994, multicultural mural. And if you have a chance to see it, please, it's right there. The picture of my wife, who's in my backyard, is right there, with my little ones, two years old, who is right now 26 years old. And so I encourage you, because that was a statement that we tried to make, that we are an inclusive city. Also, I wanted to acknowledge, and because I wanted to bring some historical perspective in this conversation, that in, in 97, in June of 97, Marion County passed a resolution that called for, and let me, let me read it with my strong accent. Let me read it to you what that resolution and the policy stated. While county employees and representatives will cooperate with the INS, during that time was INS, okay, now they call DHS, which is now Department of Human Services, the Department of Land and Security, is any other government entity, county employees and representative will not, will not administer the program for the purpose of enforcing immigration law. Then another resolution came and said county laws enforcement entity, including but not limited to the county correction department, juvenile department, and county jail, will not use the resources and personnel to detect or apprehend persons solely for violation of immigration laws. That was passed by Marion County Board Commissioners, Randy Frank, Mary Permain, and Gary Here. Two of the names, Republicans. Okay? Just to acknowledge that one. So we are here all together. Now, what that have to do with the city of Salem? Two different entities. Let me give you an historical perspective as well. Almost 20 years ago, in June 23, 1997, I remember being in this room as well, we passed a resolution here, actually a policy, which stated, the city employees and representatives carry out their regular duties for the purpose of administering city services and programs, and do not perform duties dedicated by the INS or agent of INS. Okay? That's, that's very clear stated in policy, and I can give you to the, to the council for them to have this copy. Also, in the same statement, said, city employees and representatives will follow general city, state, and federal guidelines to assess eligibility for services. City employees and representatives will not discriminate against any current or potential services users in terms of race, sex, color, or national origin. City employees and representatives will not require information from current or potential services user about race, sex, color, or national origin unless that information is required by law or by the program to the employees and representatives administered. City employees and representatives may seek race, sex, color, or national origin information on a voluntary basis, so long as the information is not used for the enforcement or immigration laws.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. That's very helpful. Are you Gregory, Greg?
Let me know if you need a copy of this one.
Could you give that to the recorder? Would you mind? That'd be great. And put it into the record. Are you Gregory, Greg?
My name's Gregory, Greg. I'm a resident of precinct 140, Ward 1, and I would like to speak to the issue in this way. Oregon is a state dependent on immigrant labor. Many of our friends, neighbors, and loved ones are immigrants. Many of us have parents or grandparents who immigrated to this country for a better future. Right now, and I want to speak to the moral issue. Right now, the United States is engaged in creating a generation of refugees around the world, and this administration is not letting them in. We're not taking responsibility for the people that we're putting out of their homes. They have nowhere to go. Their homes, cultures, and entire societies have been destroyed by wars they did nothing to cause. Salem, Oregon is awake. We understand the responsibility our nation has placed upon us, and Oregonians must do our part to welcome and protect those who come to us for sanctuary. In light of this, it would not serve the objective of offering sanctuary to allow the local and state law enforcement to aid in the apprehension and deportation of our immigrants. I support inclusivity, but prefer sanctuary. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Deborah Patterson, Deborah, there you are. Please go ahead.
Honorable Mayor Bennett and honorable councilors, thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Reverend Dr. Deborah Patterson. I'm a United Church of Christ clergy person, and I'd like to speak to the portion of the Pledge of Allegiance where we talked about one nation under God. And God, in the Judeo-Christian faith tradition, as well as in the Islamic faith tradition, implores us to welcome the stranger and to care for the alien among us. A large portion, portion of our schoolchildren, as we heard tonight, are undocumented, and it's in everyone's best interest for them to be safe and to learn in an environment where they are living with intact families. We need the farmworkers to tend our crops, as we've heard, and I personally like our vineyards, not only for communion. We need the young people to train to be home care workers and healthcare professionals for our aging population. Salem is a graying city. A lot of retirees come here. We need our city to feel like a safe place where everyone can trust their neighbors, and as we continue, we can continue to trust our police force, and not be afraid that others will turn them in. Finally, I'd like to end. My mother-in-law was born and raised in Brooks, and her best friend, as a small child, was a Japanese-American girl. And she still speaks, to this day speaks of the pain of losing her very best friend to the internment camps, and we don't want another generation to live with something like that. Thank you for considering this issue. I strongly support it.
Thank you very much. That's the end of, that's the end of our list of folks who've signed up. Is there anyone who is moved to speak? Alrighty. Need your name and ward or address, please.
So thank you. My name is Harold Jimenez. I'm a social worker. I live here in Salem, Oregon. I work in Jervis. I didn't prepare for a fancy speech. I don't have any numbers, any data, but I'm gonna speak from the heart. My parents came here as immigrants and refugees. My dad's an immigrant from Mexico, my mom is a refugee from El Salvador. You know, right now, we're living in a time that our children are going through a lot of anxiety. As a social worker and as a mental health practitioner, I can tell you that a lot of the students that I'm working with have a higher elevated of anxiety. Nobody has talked about the repercussions that creating a space that is not inclusive to everyone, nobody has talked about those repercussions and to the mental health and the well-being of the children. I see a lot of children here today, the future. What's gonna happen if this is not passed? What's gonna happen when the parents go home tonight? What are they gonna answer to their kids? I can tell you that trauma is real. I see it at our schools, and I hear about it from our children, our families, and it's our duty as professionals, our duty as leaders in this community, to come together and provide that helping hand, that one step forward, that support that our children are crying for. Let's not let another child go unheard and unnoticed. We gotta come together, and that's our responsibility as members here in the community. And I can tell you that nobody has also talked about the lasting effects of trauma. When kids don't want to go to school because they're scared, when kids don't want to learn in the schools, that is a lasting trauma that nobody has even talked about tonight. So, board and mayor, I, you know, appreciate you opening up this space so that we can speak, and so that we can give a voice to the kids that are not here today because of the fear of going out, for the parents and the families are not here tonight because of the fear of going out. But I can tell you that there's many of those families, and I am here for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Peterson.
Good evening, mayor, city councilmen, women, community. My name is Greg Peterson. I reside at 2485 Brown Road. I'm a candidate for city council. We look to change this a little bit if we can. I wanted you to look around the room and recognize that these are your neighbors. This is what, this is what our city looks like today. This is who we are. When we go home tonight, you'll go home and these will be your neighbors, every last one of us. I've been in this community since 1991. I come here to support my Latino brothers, Bakun. I come to support Mono Imano Coalition for Equality. I come here as a member of this community, this diverse, this rich, this inclusive within our neighborhoods. In my neighborhood in Ward Number 6, this is who we are. This is our neighborhood. This is what it looks like. We're talking about inclusivity as a charter for here, but that should be our whole community activity. We should all be inclusive in this neighborhood, in this city, all the time. This conversation should have been had 15 years ago, as this community started to change, and we recognized that our neighbors started to look different. We all need to support each other. When we leave here, we're still neighbors, and we need to support each other in this community. We're starting a conversation today, and we're asking the city council to adopt a resolution that's about our community and about our neighborhood. It should go undoubtedly 100% all-inclusive. But we have to remember when we leave here, that we have to continue to support one another, our brothers and our sisters of all races, all cultures, all religions, and to look at Salem, because we're changing. And we have to adopt and be grateful. And we have to adopt and be grateful for the opportunity to get to share this together. Thank you, and thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. I'm going to ask you to stop clapping. We've got more people lined up, and if you want to spend the night with us, you're welcome, but we'd like to get done here. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, mayor, members of the city council. My name is Samuel Davila. I've lived in Salem for the better part of 20 years. It is a beautiful sight to see so many people of color, and yes, city council, we need to work on that. I am a union organizer. I work with an organization that fights for social and economic change, and I am also a member of the, I would say, the human rights community, people that work very, very hard to make sure that everyone's rights are respected and upheld. Just recently, we formed, many of the people here and groups were in the process of forming a rapid response team network to help families in crisis, to help families that are victims of raids, and believe me, they are happening. As a matter of fact, just this weekend, while very, very sick, I responded to a call on Saturday where a couple of vans full of workers about to travel, about to think about this, they were ready to take off. This is something that they do every day, to drive an hour and a half, two hours, out into the mountains to collect what we call baby's breath, that beautiful little decorative flower. These are people that are paid below minimum wage, exploitive wages. They get up early, early in the morning. Well, these people, they got into the vans ready to go to work, and guess what? As they were filling up their vans, INS was waiting for them, under the pretext of the criminal alien program. They show up and they show a picture of someone. None of them had any idea who it was, but that's the pretext. They're doing it. It's happening. I was in a room full of people. There were children that were looking at me with terror. I have a three-year-old daughter, a one-year-old son, and I can't imagine just the fear, the look of terror that these children had in their eyes. I look like them. But, you know, the following day, we reached out to these families, the people that were affected, they disappeared. And we asked them, "How do you feel?" They said, "All we want to do is survive. All we want to do is give our children a better future than we had in our home countries." Because our countries have been devastated. These workers primarily, they're from Guatemala. They said, "Our countries, our communities were destroyed by war and by poverty. We've been displaced. We don't have any more homes. Big giant farms have just taken over swaths and swaths of what used to be our ancestral home."
Thank you very much.
So, I encourage you to vote yes for this resolution.
We will when we get our chance. Go ahead. State your name. Let's just keep moving so we can...
My name is Bethany Lilberg, and I live in the Inglewood neighborhood. I was born here in Salem and grew up here, went to North Salem High School. I previously worked with CAUSA, the Oregon Immigrant Rights Coalition, currently a member of the Racial Justice Organizing Committee, and I work at Salem Hospital as a Spanish medical interpreter, helping make sure that everyone in our community has access to health care. And one of, we often tend to people who are undocumented there. I think one of my favorite experiences is when a social worker told a documented person, "I don't care what your documentation status is, you matter to me because you are a human being." We see the impacts, the health impacts on people, the situation currently. I mean, I had a young man a couple of weeks ago who has seizures. His aunt said that he'd come in with a seizure, and I said, "Usually it happens when there's a stressful event." And that morning, he'd been reading about his friends who had just been detained by ICE. I'm also seeing, you know, young adolescents, and because they're stressed, afraid that their parents are going to be taken away from them. And I also wanted to state, you know, a number of people mentioned that people should just get in line. And the thing with our immigration policies are that there isn't necessarily a line for people to get in. You can only apply for residency if you have someone, a family member, to petition for you, if there's, you know, a business or a student program that you're coming through. It's not just open for people to get in line. And if you're living in a situation of extreme violence or poverty, as many people I knew in El Salvador, and in many cases, I think in El Salvador, there's a lot of gang violence there now. Those gangs are actually deported from Los Angeles. They started in the United States, and they're also, there's a long legacy of U.S. in military intervention. Somebody mentioned before of the U.S. creating, you know, contributing to the situation of refugees in the world. And so, there's to look at, too, what has been the U.S.' role and the driving factors that are causing people to migrate and come as refugees to our community.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, for letting me talk, mayor and councilors, and also, I just want to say thank you for the people here because it's definitely difficult times. It's kind of good to see a diversity of people supporting, you know, because I am undocumented. I do have the fraction, but I am undocumented. So, I just want to start, number one, with my experience, just how it has been for my family, starting with my sister. When she was 15 years old, she was followed by a man, and the worst part was that she came home, and that same person came and knocked the door and was still looking for my sister, so she was being harassed. When I talked to my sister, why she didn't call the police was because, you know, she was 15, and she was like, because I'm concerned about my parents being deported. So, just think about that. Second of all, my aunt, you know, sometimes it would go, it was, I lived in, I grew up in the northeast area. My aunt didn't live in a, I guess, in not a great neighborhood, so, you know, a lot of people would drop off the cars, and I would always tell my aunt to report it to the police, and she would always tell me the same thing, you know? "I'm afraid of what our police department is going to do if I just call our 911." So, just be aware that this is the thing. And second of all, I grew up in this community, and a lot of people that are in this room, you know, I was, I went to University of Oregon, and I was able to, you know, admire this country, and, you know, eventually I wanted to join the CIA. A lot of people helped me, you know, make sure that, you know, I went to college. A lot of people motivated me to be able to someday, you know, bring a little more back to our community from, you know, Mr. Chuck Bennett, you know, Andrea, Lorena, Jose. They all helped me to get there, and I was undocumented at that time. But you all believe in me, and you told me to keep working hard, and I'm asking you to do this, do this thing, to stand with me, you know, in these really difficult times. And I know Chief Moore, you know, works a lot with our Latino community, but I'm asking you to work more with us, especially in these times, because I am afraid, and I don't know what to tell my parents. And sometimes, you know, my parents don't even open the door anymore because they're afraid. So, just be aware of those issues, and thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor and city councilors, my name is Ellen Eisenberg, and I live at 592 Stagecoach Way Southeast. I'm a historian at Willamette University, and my major field of study is immigration history. And so, I wanted to speak a little bit to the false equivalence that I keep here, that I've heard some people make in opposing this bill or this statement. And I'm sorry, I didn't prepare anything. But...
You're doing very well.
People talk about this idea of, you know, it's a matter of how people crossed, and oh, my grandparents came, and, you know, they did it the legal way and all of that. The book that my students are reading in class this week is about previous deportations of Mexican-Americans in the 1930s during the Great Depression, and then again in the mid-1950s during an operation that was actually called, and please excuse me, this was its official name, Operation Went Back. During both of those periods, Mexican-Americans were rounded up indiscriminately in the American Southwest regardless of citizenship. Many of those who were rounded up were American-born citizens. The same thing happened to Japanese-Americans during World War II. Two-thirds of the interned were American-born citizens. And so, the idea that this is really about how people came into this country, I think, is false. I think that these policies, the policies that the current administration is trying to enact and put forward are really not about that. They're really about race, because at the end of the day, there are Canadians who are here undocumented, and there are people from France and Ireland and all over who are here undocumented, and they are not going to get stopped on the street, right? This is about race. This is, this will be enacted, the roundups and so on, or whatever happens, the enforcement will be on the basis of race, and that alone. And I think it's really important for Salem to take a stance against that. So, I urge you all to vote in favor of the resolution.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Robyn Gruper, and I live in Ward 2, and I'm, I just want to read you something that my sister wrote recently. She was born with a congenital heart defect and has had numerous health issues in her life that she's faced, and her name is Sarah. What do a kid from China, a kid from Syria, a kid from Greece, a kid from Argentina, a kid from Switzerland, a kid from Pakistan, and a kid from India have in common? They each grew up, immigrated to the United States, became surgeons and doctors, and saved my life. So, we were talking earlier about the benefits of immigration, and one of the benefits is that I have my sister alive and present. She's in her mid-30s. She was a teacher. She's a wonderful human being. And so, just remember that they're professors, they're doctors, and they're family and friends and the people in our communities. And so, I urge you to vote for this resolution, and thank you, Tom Anderson, for bringing
Mayor Bennett, members of the city council, first, thank you for hearing us, including those of us who didn't sign up in advance. My name is Lee Tubman, and I live at 55 Woodside Drive in South Salem. I want to especially speak to the concerns that our neighbors raised about waiting in line and the rule of law. I want to respect those concerns. I want to say that I recognize the value of waiting in line. My daughter-in-law is Chinese. When she and my son married, they had to wait 18 months before the INS at the time would recognize the marriage as official, as legal, as real. And yes, I had to sponsor them. I had to sponsor her, and she had the advantage of having someone who could afford to sponsor There is such a thing as waiting in line, but as this person who spoke earlier said, not all of us have that luxury. There's also the question of the rule of law, which I enormously respect. If the law says that a fourth grader or a second grader is an American citizen and that his or her parents can be deported because they are not citizens, we really have to look at that law and say, is, not to be too tacky, is there a higher law? Is there some morality involved? I'm one of the people who raised my hand as a teacher, and we have had numerous conversations about, well, what does the safety pin do? What good does it do to show my students that I am in their corner? And yes, I am willing to open my home to my students in need, and yes, I recognize what Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Sometimes you obey the law and you go to jail." And if I wind up jailed for protecting my students, so be it. But I have to say, as a country, we should not be in the business of enforcing laws that separate children from their families, from their parents. And I applaud all of you who are here, members of the council. I respectfully urge you to adopt the resolution, not because it has the force of law, but because it matters morally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Perez. Thank you for having me here tonight. Okay, I don't know what to say, but the word that comes to mind right now is fear. I never thought that after living for 10 years in this community, I would feel fearful to just walk out of my house. I'm a DACA recipient, but what has happened since November, when we elected the new president and when he took office on January 20th, everything changed. I know and I feel safe in this community in Salem, and just, not just Salem, but in all Oregon. But now with a degree in bilingual education and elementary education, I feel that there's people still that rejects me, that finds a way to oppose what I believe and what I represent. I'm undocumented, and I had questioned myself as to if there was a possible way to do it the right way, to stay in line. But as I think back, when I was 12 years old, when I decided to migrate to the United States with my family, I only had a few months to decide. I was going to quit school and start working at age 12 because I couldn't afford school anymore, but my dream was to become a teacher. So, what else could I do to just stay there and start and keep working, or start working and give up my dream to become a teacher, or to immigrate to another place where, at that moment, I didn't understand, understood the laws and the regulations that are in place in this country at this moment? But I had to risk it. I had to walk. I had to, I had to leave my safe space and travel to a new, to a new country and to new family members. And finally, after 10 years, on December 5th, I submitted my final paper for the Education Department in Western Oregon University. And February 14th, so not more than a week ago, I finally received my license in teaching. But now with this administration, I fear that I will not be able to do what, to contribute and be back to my community for the last 10 years they have of me so much. So, if you vote yes on this resolution, I think that would also help me to, to look at my mom's eyes and tell her that I am safe, because she's fearful that I can be deported even though I'm a DACA recipient. And I can explain to her that regardless of her fears, I'll do something in this country and I'll do something better of my life, as I have proved myself in the last 10 years.
Great. Thank you very much. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Yessir X. I live in North Salem. I'm a student at North Salem High School. And I remember the morning after the election, I woke up and I was terrified. I walked the whole day just in a fog, terrified for myself as a queer person, terrified for my friends around me. I'm terrified that my best friend, who I've known for eight years, is going to come back from her exchange in Japan, and maybe her family might not be here. And she told me that her brother and sister, they're scared that they might not be able to work anymore, like they're applying for a green card, even though they've lived here for forever. And I'm making Salem a sanctuary city, a safe place. That's a start, and that's what we need right now, so thank you.
I actually went to North, too. Spent a little while. I'm, my name is Carrie Elmore. I live in Ward 1, which is actually where I went to elementary school, but now I am a student at Willamette Law, and I believe Professor Benford over there can confirm that most law students do not have, how many hours are we at now, extra to spare? But this is really important. So, I just want to say, go back to a comment that someone made earlier... So I just want to say, go back to a comment that someone made earlier, there is a difference between a bank robber and someone who immigrates, whether or not they have documents. And people cross borders to save lives, to improve lives. This isn't just a whim, it's not a small decision to cross a border. And immigrants contribute, as many here have spoken to already, contribute immensely to our economy, to our culture, to our society. They pay taxes. Bank robbers don't. Also, I mean, bank robbers are taking away money, immigrants who are undocumented are not eligible for the social services, they're only contributing economically, they're not taking things back out. That's my main point. I just want to encourage you to please.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, is there any, anyone else? Yes?
Hi, my name is Trevor Phillips, I live in Ward Three. I'd like to thank the councilors for considering this resolution. I'd like to thank Mayor Bennett. I try to keep this simple, it's hard for me to talk in public. I am an emergency room physician. With the help of an amazing team at Salem Hospital, I save lives for a living. I see things, when society starts to, you know, miss things, that's what we do. You know, we work together to help other people. We are all human beings. I mean, look around this room. This is America. This is what we look like. We're here to try to make the world a better place. We share that all in common, regardless of our opinions, whether we're Republican or Democrat, Libertarian, Green Party, Independent, it doesn't matter, we are human beings. This resolution matters. This resolution matters more than you can possibly imagine. This resolution will save lives. Please listen to the words of those speakers who were brave and went before me. You can save lives tonight by supporting this bill. Please do so. Know that many of us want it to go farther. We support sanctuary city status, we wanted to include things on behalf of religious minorities, some of which who served with my brother in the military and kept him alive by doing their job as interpreters in Iraq. This is an important issue, please take it seriously. I appreciate your time. Please help us save some lives. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, council members, when you get shown up by your students, you know you need to stand up and say something. It's been hard tonight, listening to, I'm sorry?
Could you share your name?
I'm sorry, my name is Warren Benford, and I'm a resident of Salem, and I'm also a law professor at Willamette University.
Right, thank you.
It's been hard tonight to hear people framing this resolution as a legal issue, because it's not. Even if it were, it's critical for us to remember that the Holocaust was legal. Child rape has been legal. Slavery, when people referred to the Constitution, was legal under our country's Constitution. Stoning women is legal under many religious laws, and it used to be legal under some countries' laws, and continue to be lawful under the laws that apply within communities in those countries. These are the moments that define us. This will be the moment that defines you. This is not a legal issue. Tonight's vote is a moral one. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, is there anyone else then? I know, I'm sounding like I'm begging for more.
My name is Debbie Kennedy, and actually I am a-
Could you speak in, I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Debbie Kennedy, and actually I'm a resident of Kaiser. But I, I think I'm officially a Salem resident, because I was the union representative here for ten years in the nineties. You know, I've been waking up in the morning and not being able to sleep, because I'm afraid they're coming after me. You know, I just reached the age where I qualify for, you know, Social Security and Medicare, and Paul Ryan wants to get Medicare, and the other party, people that be want to take away my Social Security. But in listening to all of this, this is so much worse. And it reminds me of the recon, the Reconstruction, well, it reminds me of before this, before the Civil War. And what, you know, slaves were running away to the north where they, where they didn't have slaves, and slavers were coming across to collect them and take them back down. And there were also people being drugged and taken back down to the south and being sold as slaves when they weren't slaves. I mean, it went on and on and on. But when they passed the Fugitive Slave Act and allowed the slavers to come up and take anybody at any time that had run away, and there was, that caused the Civil War. And so this kind of strikes me, that I don't think people can live in a state of solid fear all the time without some things coming apart at the seams. So I think we really need to do the best we can to take care of each other, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is, my name is Pedro Majora, and I am a small business owner, and also live on the nor, northeast part of Salem. And lately, I just see a lot of my customers with fear, they are worried. And like a small owner, of course, I pay taxes. Taxes are part of our community. And not because I, I'm afraid of lose my business, because I probably will do something else, but most of my customers are Hispanics. And also, I am a father of two kids, and I see that a lot of kids also are worried, and I just want to ask the mayor, to the board's members that are support, save business, save families, and keep our homes safe.
Thank, thank you very much. Okay, well, we're going to then close the public comment at this point and move forward. I want to first, though, compliment the entire lineup this evening. This has been some of the best testimony I've ever heard. I thought it was just excellent. It, it really was both moving and informative, intelligent, and I thought consistently on point. So I just want to thank you all very much for, for the quality of, of conversation we've had this evening. You will inform our decision with the testimony you gave. With that, then, we'll move to our special orders of business section. And is that, oh, five A? Well, that's just me, and that's just me appointing somebody, so. Shall we move beyond that, or do I announce what I informed? I have, I have appointed to the Historic Landmarks Commission, the Human Rights and the Human Rights and Relations Advisory Committees, Jamie French, Sarah Pearson, Felicia Burke Bechtolt, Rita Song, Ellen Jenks, and Luz Maria Reyna. So if any of you here, congratulations, you've just been appointed to one of those four. Now, I'd like to call on Councilor Anderson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I move that the city council adopt attached, adopt resolution number 2017-22, which identifies Salem as an inclusive city.
Excellent. Would you like to discuss your motion?
Well, I certainly would, but not, not really very much, because I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, about the quality of the testimony. I first want to talk to all the DACA students here, and commend you for your courage. I think the most eloquent testimony that I can give is to adopt all the testimony that was given here tonight. I really don't have anything else to say, I think this is crucial to the city, and thank you, everybody, for coming out.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor McCoy?
I too, after almost two and a half hours of testimony, I was paying attention to the bitter end, and I'm an old guy, so it's hard to do it this time of night. But it was very, but well thought out, I think, respectfully delivered, and even more, you were so respectful of folks who didn't agree with you. We don't always see that in this room, so congratulations for that. I, as support this resolution, will be voting for it. I would say, though, to the, and we heard testimony about this, this is really a reaffirmation of an existing city council policy A nine, which basically calls for and has done for the last twenty years what you're asking for in this, in this resolution. And so I think it's totally appropriate, and the city is multicultural, and is, with such a vibrant immigrant community, to reaffirm what we've been doing for the last twenty years. And that is exactly what you're asking for. We don't, our police and all our city officials treat everybody equally, they don't discriminate, the services are dealt with on every person in this city at the same level, with the same open and, open attitude. Nothing has been done, the police department, we've got a wonderful police chief and a great department, they go about their, their job, which is enforcing the laws here in the city, on an equal basis. They do not, and as the resolution said, don't interact with and support the activities of ICE and the immigration, or the authorities that enforce those federal laws. So just make sure that you understand that. It's been twenty years that we've been doing this. Glad to reaffirm it, I think it's totally appropriate in this, this troubled times. And again, thank you for being here tonight. I wish it was this full every week, not usually the case.
With the council's permission, I'm going to ask the police chief, if he would just share some thoughts on, I, I was interested in the discussion Marco gave, as well as Councilor McCoy, on our, the current state of the, of the art here.
Good evening, Mayor, council, my name's Jerry Moore. I am the chief of police in Salem. I've worked here for about thirty-eight years, and I've been the chief of police for eleven. And over the course of that time, as chief of police, I can tell you, I've responded to a variety of forums where there was concern such as this, and I've been consistent with our message at every one. We're a proud professional organization, we take care of people, and we provide service regarding of their status in this community. We are not a federal law enforcement agency, we do not enforce immigration laws, and that's been our, course of our work, as we follow the state law and policies of the city of Salem in that manner, and we don't intend to change that. I can tell you, we certainly are only as good as a community that trusts us. And that's what we work for each and every day, that this community trusts us, and when there's an issue, they give us a call and we respond. I certainly understand the fear, I heard a great deal of it tonight, but I've heard a great deal of it since November. And I understand that, but we need a, a community that isn't afraid to call their police department, and that's what we strive for. So unless you have any questions, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
I, I just want to make sure it is abundantly clear that you can call the police department under any circumstance and expect service, protection, a professional attitude, and no ICE agent with you. Is that the situation?
I believe that's pretty much how we work.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any further discussion, questions? Yes, Councilor Cook?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. I just wanted to say that tonight, I think it's so important that everyone's here, and in asking myself, it's such an honor to be a counselor and representing Ward Seven, what can I do to be an ally in a situation like this? And while we are looking at passing an inclusivity measure, because of the amount of fear and anxiety that was spoken about tonight by the children and families that are brave enough to have come out and identified and self-identified themselves, in a sense, in essence, putting targets on themselves in this community, I think it's important that we look at a path for healing and look at, in addition to maybe strengthening these measures, something like trauma-informed care work as a city, to bring that forward, to help with this fear and anxiety. We know that that is an adverse childhood experience, we know that this has negative health outcomes. And I would urge us to entertain that in conjunction with this.
Thank you very much. Councilor Lewis?
I'm going to support the resolution that's before us tonight. I, I have to say, I do see it as a reconfirmation of what the city already does stand for. But it's, it's needed. The fear I heard tonight is real. And that's the issue for me. Nobody should have to live in fear. If you've done something wrong, then, then deal with it, and then you won't have fear. If you have not done something wrong and you're in fear, stand up and do something about it. The words, the words that we're going to vote on tonight are great, but as a practical matter, I don't think they're going to change lives. If, if it's true that these words can bring some peace and remove some fear, then I think that's great. But I don't think that's the case. I think it's only when we stand up for what's right that we get fear removed. I, I told myself not to bring this up, but I'm going to. The night that we accepted Daniel Benjamin's resignation for posting a video that showed human beings being run down by automobiles, and when I asked, where does it happen? I was told repeatedly, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. It does matter. That's what action is about. If there are occasions of that happening in this city, or any city, it's our responsibility to stand up against it, not just talk about it, but do something about it. And I recognize, because you hear it all the time, I don't want to say anything because. I don't want to raise my hand because. I can guarantee you, there will not be the removal of fear until you get over that fear. We, we have to stand up for what's right, not just talk about it, but do it.
Thank you very much. Councilor Kaiser?
Thank you. Just a couple of brief comments. To your point, Councilor Lewis, I think it's important that people stand up, but sometimes it's hard for people to find their voice because they are afraid. I can recognize that I have certain privileges because I'm white, because I'm a citizen, because I live where I do. And so I need to stand up for people when they feel like they can't, because the color of their skin is a wrong color, because they're undocumented, because they're unsure if they're going to make it home that night. And so I think it's important for all of us, and especially people who are, are white, that we become allies with people who aren't, and we recognize that, we have white privilege in this country, and that it's important to stand for people that don't. I think the first time I really realized this, I was, it was about seven years ago, I was a student teacher at McKay High School for a semester. I was in a social studies class, I was in a class of primarily Latino students, and I said, I want to talk about immigration. And they said, Ms. Kaiser, we don't want to talk about that, because if you talk about that outside of school, you could get shot. Somebody could stab you, you could get deported. My family could get deported. And it was in that moment that I really realized, I have white privilege. And I think until we really recognize that, we cannot pretend to know the experience of people of color, and especially people who are immigrants, and especially under- of people of color, and especially people who are immigrants, and especially undocumented immigrants. I think it's very important that we support this resolution, and I am so proud of all the people who have shown here tonight, and I counted, there are 45 people that testified, which is amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have mixed feelings on this resolution. As I read it, I do have an issue with rule of law, and who's in my country legally and who's not. This speaks nothing to that, really. This is exactly the way things are now, and it doesn't really change that. I just didn't know if people in the audience knew that these restrictions were already in place. I am more than fine reasserting the issues of how our police department functions, because they have enough problems in the City of Salem without doing another government's job, which is, I don't know if that's why it came down to that as well, but, you know, we don't, we're not in the immigration business, and I don't see where we ever will be. That being said, our system in this country is seriously boogered up. The Democrats had full control of both Houses of Congress and the presidency for two years, and nothing changed. And the Republicans are going to have it, and save for some flurries on the upfront, possibly. I contend that nothing's going to change. They use it as a political tool back and forth, to the detriment of everyone here. We have this space where people can come in, and I see the difficulties people go through to get here, to be able to feed their families, and it's truly amazing. But then they have to live almost as a second-class citizen, because I'm in fear somebody will find out I'm here. To be able to work, I actually have to falsify documents. I have to drive without a license and become a criminal because I crossed over the border. And I was doing tons of reading earlier today, as far as, is it illegal to be here? And there's multiple descriptions of how that is. But that being said, that is not in this resolution. There's a modification that may come forward that I may have an issue with. I will support this resolution on the floor tonight. I don't know about the other pieces, depending on how an attorney defines a few of the terms instead.
All right. Thank you very much. I think we're ready to vote. Not quite?
Just one more thing. No, I've recovered now. I just want to say that--
Log over Clem?
Yeah, yeah. I just want to say that it is different now. I affirm the history of Salem, but we're in a unique time right now, and we need to reaffirm that, and we need to say that now as loudly and as clearly as we can.
Thank you. I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We're going to take a couple-minute recess, okay?
Mr. Mayor, in light of what I said earlier at the Council comments, and I would like to make a second motion with regard to this, I move that the Council direct staff to prepare an amendment to Resolution 2017-22 that affirms the city's commitment to oppose discrimination of people based on protected status and prohibits the use of city personnel or resources to enforce or assist in the enforcement of any federal law that discriminates based on protected status. Status means race, religion, color, sex, national origin, marital status, age, disability, sexual orientation, gender identity, source of income, domestic partnership, or familial status.
Second? Did you second?
I did.
Cook seconded.
I think it's more than that, even.
Okay. Any discussion? Wasn't there anything else?
Well, I'll have something. I will say that some people who testified, Zoe, whose last name I did not catch--
Right.
--and Pete Teller, there were, the two I did catch, and others who said, "Well, this is just immigration. What about other classes?" And I think the Council knows that I submitted another resolution that will go this way, and upon reflection, not only technically did it not fit the Council rules in terms of what you put on it, but upon reflection also, this is something that we need some further look at from the staff and from the city attorney, and I've had some conversations with them today, and I know that, you know, the staff will review this and come back with something that then we can say, "Do we support it? Do we not support it?" And I think Mr. Atchison will be able to answer some questions in terms of, what does this place the city in terms of its legal obligations? What do these terms mean? How might this work vis-a-vis the federal government, which I think are the questions?
So you're anticipating a fairly extensive staff, well, extensive, whatever, but staff report that some rises--
I'm not directing them to bring it back to the next meeting. I'm just saying that they should look at it, and we should, and then your future is the sort, is what I would say.
Councilor McCoy?
My question is, why does it have to be an amendment to what we just passed? Why can't it be another resolution?
Well, if I may respond to that. I had that question, too, but I think these, I think it's more emphatic to have one resolution that concerns this type of issue, because the resolution we just passed related to one of many types of protected classes, and if we're passing a resolution on inclusivity, it seems sort of incongruous that here's one resolution, we're an inclusive city, and to me, that's the umbrella that covers all these other instances. So it doesn't make sense to me to pass a resolution, pass another resolution, pass another resolution. Now, I'm not speaking to the, you know, I mean, people may vote this resolution up or down, this amendment up or down, but I think that's the right process, to do it in one document rather than several documents.
Okay. Councilor Lewis?
I'll vote for the motion, and the only thing I would add is, I'd like to see the process a little bit different than the process of the motion we just passed. Got to tell you, it was frustrating to get emails and phone calls encouraging me, insisting that I vote for something that I had not even seen. Not even seen. It's obvious, let me finish. It's obvious that the amendment was drawn up, sent out to some people with the encouragement of contacting the City Council, and giving the phone numbers, email address, and including suggested language. As you can tell by the emails we've gotten, some of them are repetitive. But the process, the way we went about getting to where we got to tonight, bad form. And I just want to make sure that it doesn't happen again with this amendment.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
A point of clarification, so the emails were bad form, contacting tonight, or the fact that they were the same was bad form?
The fact that the email went out, including the resolution, to some people, getting them to respond to the City Council before some of us had even received it, is bad form. Absolutely.
Councilor Nanki?
Thank you. And I was going to mention similar, and this is probably, because there are certain things, when we put in a counselor item, and just kind of educational for the entire body, since we have new ones in here as well, some will generate zero response from the general public, depending on what it is we're doing. Other, like this counselor item, we were well assured that there would be a lot of input from the community as well, and the community saw it before the Council saw it, unless I missed something in my email. Essentially, I think last weekend, I was getting emails that say, "Pass the inclusivity resolution." And it's like, what resolution? Because I knew nothing of it. And then I got a blank form letter that said, "Here, fill this out, add in your particulars, and email it to all the Council as well." So in that respect, it's like, yeah, what do you want me to vote on? Because I haven't seen it, and I didn't see it until Thursday, or Wednesday, or whenever we got our council packet. So just a cautionary for--
I think the point is probably well taken. And, Councilor?
Thank you. I think there are two issues here, and one of the ones relates to the original motion, and that original motion was turned in before Tuesday of last week at 9:30. And so that goes to the Council at an appropriate time, and that also, the ways things are set up now, goes to the public at the same time, I would think. So that's one issue, which I think it was done correctly. With regard to the second issue, my view was, when I put it in on Friday, I specifically wanted to send it to the manager and the mayor in order that it could go out to as many people as could go out at that time. And my view of it at the time was that was merely an amendment to the motion I passed. And amendments oftentimes are made at the time of the council meeting, and I wanted to give notice as possible, as much as I can. You know, so I'm sorry for the Councilors, and I apologize, and I can see how it could be bad form, which is why I pulled that motion back so we could look at it again.
I just, no, just a sec. It just, I think the point's well taken. I think it's understood, and it is, it's kind of an odd situation where this stuff comes out to hit you on Thursday, and then also the public has access to it, that maybe we ought to, one thing I'd sure suggest to Councilors, just as a thought, if you're going to do a counselor motion, you know it's going to be a fairly debated, get it out early so people know what's going on. I just, it's always kind of surprised me when things show up on Thursday out of kind of nowhere, so it's just good politics, I think. Councilor Lewis?
I want to make sure that my statement is understood. The first resolution, before it was amended on Friday, the first resolution is a resolution that I got emails and phone calls on Wednesday, before the packet had even been sent out. One of the gentlemen that called me made it clear he was calling me specifically, and when I asked if he had a copy of the resolution, he said, "Yeah, I got it right here." And I had to tell him, "I haven't seen it. Shouldn't I have the time to look at it, at least before I'm asked about it?" My concern is that it was distributed to some for the purpose, brilliant, let's call it brilliant politics, brilliant. Get everybody in back of something, and then see what you can do. It was not illegal. It was not, it was bad form.
This is Lee Burris. I apologize for the form, but I will tell you that the resolution that I got was from Causa. It was sent to me, and I told them I would put it on the agenda for that meeting. So beyond that, I didn't do anything. But I'm sorry, Council Lewis, and I understand your concerns, and from my point, that's not going to happen again, which is why I separated the motions.
Exactly. Thank you, Councilor Nanki.
Yeah. Just to touch base on that one, and when we turn in a counselor item to staff, I don't know if it's public or not, but we don't see it until the packet comes out. So just more of a, and we could address it at Council Rules as well, depending, trying to define that, as far as when you just let the rest of the Council know something that may draw a significant public comment, it'd be advantageous to share that as you turn it in for docket as well. That being said, in regards to this extra section four, is what Counselor Anderson read different than what was sent out as the original potential section four?
Yes, it is a bit different, and that's after consultation with the city attorney who gave me the language for this.
Can I ask for a repeat on that? Because there were just a couple of words of concern that I have, whether or not I'll support modifying it or not.
Sure. I think the concerns are what status means, so I'll just read what status means.
Citizen status, and then--
Yeah. Status means, means race, religion, color, sex, national origin, marital status, age, disability, sexual orientation, gender identity, source of income, domestic partnership, or familial status. And I am told by the city attorney that this list of protected classes comes from the Salem Revised Code, Chapter 97, which deals with human rights.
One thing to remember, too, just a thought, this is just a courtesy right now, to get this pulled together. We can vote yes or no when it's done, but we'll have had a chance for the staff to review it, to figure out the implications of it. This is just a chance to get it into some sort of understandable language. Some of this may not make it. I mean, it just may not be part of the final, because it has such undefined implications. We don't know, but it's a chance to get it to staff, and we've been pretty good about the courtesy of allowing counselors to get their ideas to staff, is all I'm thinking.
If I may just express a couple of concerns that I have with it. One was the definition of citizen status. The other is potential for executive orders versus federal law, because they are not synonymous. An executive order actually tells the rest of the folks who do enforce the law how they enforce those laws that are already passed by Congress. So that was another concern. And then the enforcement of a federal law that discriminates against people, I would think, wouldn't be constitutional at the onset, so just trying to figure out--
Yeah. And I think that's what the attorney's here for, and I'm sure he won't object to any of us memorializing him with our concerns.
Right. Because it's basically saying, "No city funds, personnel, or equipment shall be used to assist in," which, the way our stuff reads now, we can exchange information freely with immigration and feds as well. So if I shared that information, is that in violation of what this order would be, because that's how staff will look at it from a policy perspective, and I don't necessarily agree with that, because most of that is in relationship to actual serious crimes.
Okay. I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Let's listen to direction.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. All righty. Very good. Thank you. That was a--
I don't look forward to your job.
All right. We're to 5C. Councilor McCoy?
I move staff recommendation.
Excellent. The second is Lewis. Would you like to discuss?
Well, this pertains to the police safety facility and library seismic and building safety improvement bond measures, and the recommendation is to adopt a resolution calling for a measure election to be held on May 16, 2017, in the amount of $61.8 million to finance a new public safety facility. And the second part is adopt resolution calling for a measure election to be held on November 7, 2017, in the amount of $15.3 million to finance seismic and building safety improvements. We discussed this in length at our last council meeting, and this is now getting this done in time to be able to put it on the May ballot and move forward.
It must be done tonight to get it on the May ballot.
Unless you want to meet tomorrow.
Unless you want to meet tomorrow, or later tonight. Councilor Cook?
After just talking, thank you, Mayor Bennett, after talking with Deputy Chief Belshaw and with Library Director Julie Soles, I understand that both are putting their support behind both of these-- I understand that both are putting their support behind both of these measures, and that a statement will be soon forthcoming. Also, it's my understanding the Library Advisory Board is backing this as well. Both are very important to me.
Thank you very much. Councillor Anderson?
I never thought each of these motions would be viewed as anti-climax, but I sort of think it is in today's climate of discussion we had earlier. I will say that I know the staff will be discussing Mr. Shepke's concerns about how do we keep the library operating while we're doing that. And we've got enough time till November to come up with some kind of plan.
Thank you. Councillor Case?
I just want to quickly echo those concerns that were brought up about what did the staff do if the bond passes for seismic? You know, how do you actually run a library while in a construction zone? And I think that's a, having gone through that at work with some minor construction, yeah, it's annoying. I couldn't even imagine trying to deal with kids and the public at the same time with that. So, I have heard from some folks about they would really like to see both of these issues on the May ballot. I think that's a whole separate discussion. I'm not, I don't want to get into it, but I just wanted to acknowledge that. And, yeah, that's it.
I'd like to be tall and 30. I don't think I'm going to be that high. Okay. I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, go ahead. Okay, very good, very good. Information reports. Oh, no, we're going back. Sorry, sorry.
And a consent calendar.
We have a consent calendar. I apologize.
Okay, hold on.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. I move the approval of the consent calendar with the following pull. Item 3.3B by Councillor Case, and it's my understanding that that will hear that immediately after we approve the rest of the consent calendar.
Okay. Do you need to run through this, or are we pretty comfortable we've all read it? All right. We have a motion and a second on the consent calendar, do we?
Second.
There we go, thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passed unanimously. Councillor Case, 3.3B has been polled.
Yeah, thank you. I move staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by Anderson.
In the spirit of the Fire Ward Senate Council-
We're just moving along here. Councillor Case, would you like to discuss your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pulled this just for some clarification. And I spoke with Director Fernandez earlier today about it, and I'm going to support the motion. But I would like Director Fernandez to talk about it a bit, because it sounds like it's a program that's been in existence before, but that ODOT is implementing again. And if you want to just clarify why we're doing this, the benefits of it, and a little bit about how it works.
Certainly, councillor, thank you. The IGA that's before you in 3.3B simply allows the state of Oregon to use state gas tax money as opposed to federal transportation dollars. What that does is it allows, it simplifies the process. It simplifies the paperwork. This is something that the Oregon Department of Transportation has done in the past when they had more funds available. It's called the Fund Exchange Program. It appears that they are reinstituting it for smaller projects such as this. So, anytime that we can exchange our federal, our entitlement, federal transportation dollars for state dollars, it is always a great, you know, we don't get dollar-for-dollar. We get something less than dollar-for-dollar. But the savings is almost always better, just because there's less paperwork and less reporting involved. So, this IGA does not change the scope of the project. This IGA does not change our, the way we need to build, contract the project, or subject to boldly wages, or anything of the sort. It is simply re-characterizing the funding from federal transportation dollars to state transportation dollars.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing done. We ready for a vote? Although it's been moved by Councillor Case and seconded by Councillor Anderson to approve item 3.3B. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? No? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. And we are now to information, open the public hearing. You got to open this public hearing, huh? Okay. Recorder, please introduce the public hearing.
The City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding an owner-initiated annexation of territory located at 3652 and 3672 Mailey Place Southeast into the City of Salem and withdrawal from Marion County Fire District 1, the East Salem Sewer District, and the East Salem Water District. The criteria applicable to the annexation are set forth in SRC 260.060C, and the criterion applicable to the withdrawal from the special districts is ORS 222.5241. Testimony for the hearing must be addressed toward these criteria or toward other criteria that the person testifying believes apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues related to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application. The City Council shall grant such requests by continuing the public hearing or leaving the record open for additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony.
Okay, thank you very much. And our staff presentation.
Good evening. I'm Pamela Cole, Planner in Community Development. Tonight, I'm presenting the staff report for annexation case C 719 for a property at 3652 and 3672 Mailey Place Southeast. I'd like to enter the staff report, attachments, and presentation into the record. The annexation territory is .28 acres. It's located south of State Street, east of Interstate 5, and west of 37th Avenue Southeast. And the two parcels take access from 37th Avenue Southeast. It's contiguous on the north and west to the city limits. The two parcels are located in the East Salem Sewer District and suburban East Salem Water District. Because the property is contiguous to city limits, an annexation application was required to obtain city sewer services. The previous property owners were Hallie and Prennis Wolf. They applied for annexation in March of 2016. They sold the property in May. And the new owners, the Davenport's, submitted sewer permits for two new dwellings in April and July. And the sewer permits were finalized after the Davenport's submitted their annexation petition in August. Under Senate Bill 1573, which was adopted in March 2016, the proposed annexation may not be referred to the voters, because it meets the qualifications under the Senate bill. That is, that all of the owners signed the annexation petition. The territory is within the urban growth boundary. It's subject to the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan, and it's contiguous to the city limits. Although the annexation is not eligible to be referred to the voters, council retains authority on whether to annex the territory. Staff reviewed the application materials, and we found that the proposed annexation met the annexation criteria, which include whether it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and state goals, whether it allows orderly, efficient, and timely provision of urban services, and whether it serves the public interest. Therefore, staff's recommending that council find that the petitioner's signed a valid annexation petition, determine then the annexation satisfies the applicable criteria, adopt Order 2017-01-A-N-X, apply City of Salem RS, Single Family Residential zoning, and withdraw the territory from Marion County Fire District Number 1, East Salem Service District, and suburban East Salem Water District. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, of course.
Okay. We'll see if there's any testimony. Is there anyone here? Nope. Okay, any questions for staff? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Lewis, I'm sorry.
Yeah, of course, the elephant in the room is the lawsuit that the City of Corvallis and others filed about the law that was passed last year. Do you know where that case is now?
Mr. Ashiston, would you like to field that one?
Could you enlighten us that-
So, there is a bill passed by the legislature in 2016, I believe, that prohibited cities with voter-approved annexation from referring those annexations to the voters. And so, yeah. So, essentially, it says that if there's a petitioner-initiated annexation, and you have voter-approved annexation in your city, such as in your charter, like Salem does, the bill prohibits us from referring it to the voters.
But it's a bill in Corvallis?
No. So, moving forward, that law was passed, and the City of Corvallis didn't like it very much. And so, they are challenging that law in Benton County Circuit Court, with the help of the League of Cities. A decision on that lawsuit is expected at any time. So, there's a question about if the Benton County Circuit Court decides that the state law is invalid, would the City Council then decide to refer this annexation to the voters, consistent with our charter? If Benton County Circuit Court decides that the law is valid, would you just continue to process this annexation without a vote of the citizens?
What would the consequence be if we deferred until there was a decision?
That would be a good idea.
Yeah. I could maybe, I could maybe help here, since-
Just a second. Who's going to, are you going to make the motion?
I'm going to make a motion.
I've got a motion.
We got, I got, motions are us.
You guys should do a bond bill.
How about you two talk real quickly? Who's got the right motion?
Well, mine was just given to me by the city attorney, so I'm hoping mine is the right one.
Is that one?
No. Okay. I'm sorry, council president. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Who's got the right one?
Anderson.
I've got the right one.
Councillor Anderson.
For once. Yeah. I'm going to try to-
You didn't send this out to somebody.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. Since this particular piece of property, if it is ever annexed, will be in the far eastern end of Ward 2, I think it is appropriate that I make the following motion. I move to close the public hearing and continue deliberations to March 27. May I speak to that motion? We have heard what the city attorney has said, and that goes to your point. That decision could come any moment, and it will affect what we do here. If the decision says we have to refer it to the voters, because it's in our charter, then that's what we'll have to do. If the decision says no, you can go through the process of the new state law, then that's what we'll do. And we won't know that until the decision comes out. And then, I presume, it may be appealed. But we, that's another issue when we get to that.
I do have a-
Councillor Lewis?
I'm not going to be here on the 27th, so I'm going to give my two cents worth now. And I'd like to draw the council's attention to the map that was included with this staff report. As far back as the late 1990s, Hector McPherson, who was one of the founders of our land use laws, tried to get the legislature to do away with the annexation vote, because he saw what it was doing in places like Corvallis, where in the late 1990s, the annexation vote was used, in fact, to keep people out. The city practiced de facto discrimination by using the annexation vote to keep people out. I've got a friend that I've known for 50 years, so I guess he's my best and maybe only friend. He lives in Canby. He voted for the right to vote on annexations in Canby. And when I asked him about it, he goes, "I know it's wrong. I know it's wrong. But if you're going to give me the power to control the size of Canby, I want to keep it nice and small." So, I like the, I like the idea of the annexation vote. When the legislation was passed last year, it was very specific. It didn't do away with annexation votes. It did away with the need for annexation votes in cases just like this one. Two lots. Not 10 acres, not 2 acres, not even an acre. But yet, the idea of sending this, and I appreciate the home rule, and we want to protect what we have in the city. But we also live in a country where it's among, it's up. You go, the state has authority and power over some things, and it can change the way cities rule. And that's the way it is. The federal government has control over the states to certain extents. The state finally saw the wisdom to do away with the annexation vote in simple cases. And this is exactly the example, exactly the example that they were talking about. And the idea of having the entire city vote whether these two lots should come into the city is a waste of time, energy, and it sets us up to be just like Corvallis. Vote against annexations, and you control population. That's not what I want my city to be.
Councillor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I presided over the League of Oregon Cities meeting, where we elected to intercede in this. And I've had conversations with Mr. Reed, who's a big proponent of those annexations. Voting actually was one of the primary drivers when that came to pass, actually, as I came onto this seat. It was on the same ballot as me the first time. I was not in support of it. I still don't support it. But I don't support the state being able to circumvent what regulations a city may or may not have in home rule. So, with that being said, League Council as well said that we should have a decision by the end of February, which is tomorrow. So, rather than not know really where this one should go, we should wait until that ruling comes out to figure out whether or not we send it out to the voters, or we don't.
Councillor Lewis?
Yeah, just one more statement. I think councillor Anderson mentioned it. And the folks that are adamant about saving the annexation vote, like Mr. Reed, Mr. Lamb, and Philomath, I believe they're motivated enough to appeal any decision. Their answer is, the annexation vote is a God-given right. We've got it now in our city. Don't ever get rid of it. And so, the likelihood of an appeal is true. And then, the punishment for this property owner kicks in. When will an appeal end? Do we wait three months? Do we wait six months?
Any further discussion? I'm sorry.
Question for staff. So, the delay with this property, I know their request is for city water and sewer, it looks like. What is the delay expense for them? Councillor Lewis had mentioned the punishment for the property owner, just out of curiosity.
So, they've already received the services, which is allowed by policy once they submit the annexation petition. So, they're not waiting for the services. But if we wait to put them on the election in November 2018, there would be an additional cost for an annexation publication deposit of over $3,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, looks like a ready vote. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Information reports, were there any that anyone had any questions or comments on? Oh, and there's these, some land use decisions. Okay, great. I think there being no further business, without objection, we adjourn. Almost made it. Councillor Lewis, what do you got?
Sorry, sorry, this one's easy and quick. I need clarification for the Budget Committee meeting. Is it on Monday, April 17, or Wednesday, April 19? The calendar shows Wednesday, April 17. And 17 is a Monday. So, I got them both on my calendar, but, and maybe it is both. Anybody know?
So, my understanding is the meetings that were on the third Wednesday were taken off. And the third Monday, which is generally reserved for a council work session, will be used for that Budget Committee meeting. So, if I have my dates correct, there will not be a meeting on the 19th, but there is on April 17.
Okay.
That's what I have in mind.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for asking that. Now, is there any objection to adjourn? Okay, we adjourn.